...duty, the citizens, and Lord, for the fighting men and women that wear the flag of the United States of America, we ask a special blessing on them, a hedge of protection around them, that you will be with them as they protect us and defend our Constitution. And for the young people here in the audience, Lord, I just pray that this will be a wonderful experience for them to see their government in action, that they will be able to understand what we're doing here, they will be able to approach us and ask us questions if they so desire. And again, Lord, just be with us as we proceed on tonight. In your great name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Be seated. Ask the council to join me.
All right, good evening. We have two presentations that we're going to be providing this evening. First is for the presentation, the proclamation for National Dispatcher Week for the WestCom, and the second is the presentation certificates of appreciation for the race and the base support and sponsors. So at this point, what I'd like to do is I'd like to call up four members of the WestCom representatives, and let me just name those off. Paul Phillips, interim dispatch administrator. So just a quick introduction. So I mentioned Paul. We also have Marie Pope. Veronica Wilson. Did I get everybody's names? Okay, just make sure. Okay, so every year we go through as a city providing a proclamation acknowledging National Dispatchers Week, and I'll just read a couple excerpts from this, and then if you have anything that you'd like to add, but we'd just like to bring attention to this. As everybody knows, within the city we also belong to WestCom, which is a shared, I'll call it a shared service for the dispatch services for 911. So these are the great people that we deal with, or anybody deals with in a time of peril when they get on the phone and call. And so it's good to put a face with a name and a voice that's usually on the other end of that phone. Marilyn Poe back here is our WestCom representative from the city council, and each city, Cypress, Seal Beach, and Los Alamos, we all provide representative that actually gets to serve and as a board member to kind of help with the budget and making decisions. So again, just wanted to acknowledge Marilyn on that. So a little bit about National Dispatcher Week, April 9th through the 15th. Safety of the citizens and our police officers is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from the citizens who telephone the west coast communication center or WestCom. These are dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our communities have with police, fire, and emergency medical services. They're a single vital link to the law enforcement and fire personnel by monitoring activities by radio, providing them with critical information, ensuring their safety and whereas the national dispatchers of the west cities, police communications center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, protection, life and property, ensuring the safety of the communities they serve. The national dispatchers have exhibited professionalism, dedication, compassion, and caring during the performance of their job in the past year. As mayor of Los Alamos, with concurrence with the city council, I proclaim the week of April 9th through 12th, 2012 as National Dispatchers Week. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you so much for honoring us here. The work and the credit really go to the dispatchers, those here and their colleagues. There's about 20 others back at the office as well, and we're very proud of what we do. And again, it is the first contact that many citizens have, so it's very important. And again, thank you so much. You said it all.
Do you want us to go back behind so that you can fit us all?
Well, if you're all friendly.
Probably the layer top.
I think to say if there are some sharp people who can go in.
I know, and that's where I always end up.
It's the only time I ever feel tall.
Okay, we're gonna take three shots to make sure that I get at least one with somebody's eye shot.
All right. So we don't normally have this many people in the city council chamber unless we've got something really exciting going on, which we really don't like to have something really exciting going on. So, yeah, but in this case, we're very happy that the chamber is full of a lot of good sponsors for our race on the base. What I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Cory to come up from the Parks and Rec Department, and he's going to get us going.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much. It's an honor and a privilege for me to be here and see so many people from our community out here to show their support for our race sponsors, and thank you very much, sponsors. This year marks our 31st annual Southland Credit Union Los Alamos Race on the Base. It took place last, actually now almost two months ago, a month and a half ago, the end of February, and I'm happy to report it was our most successful event yet. Yes. We had over 3,600 participants this year, so that was very exciting. We had 39 terrific sponsors this year. So thank you all for your sponsorship and your involvement. We definitely couldn't do it without each and every one of you. Some of, most of you are here tonight, not all, but we definitely appreciate you guys being here and your continued support. So with that, I definitely want to talk just briefly about our race. It was, we had a two-day vendor expo. We had more than 75 vendors that were out there. Like I said, 3,600 participants came out. We had eight events, which is terrific for a one-day event. We had live music. We had six live bands throughout our venue this year, which was really, really exciting, and more than 500 volunteers, which was awesome. A lot of them are Los Alamos-based community partners, so we appreciate that. And we were able to provide breakfast and lunch courtesy of Johnny Reb's to each and every one of them. So it was definitely a very, very exciting day for all of us. So I'd like to start by thanking one of our community partners in all of this, and that's the folks over at the Joint Forces Training Base. Our race has been, has been taking place at the, at the base for the last eight or 10 years or so, and we really appreciate your guys' support and obviously your service. We are so grateful for each and every one of you. So like to recognize and have you come up as I call your name, and I hope not to botch anybody's name, so forgive me if I do, but First Major Sibley. Master Sergeant DeJesus. Sergeant First Class Sanchez. Staff Sergeant Boxavala. Sergeant Ricks. And Sergeant Chavez. So thank you very much, gentlemen. We really do appreciate your guys' support, but go ahead and stay up here. We're going to leave the laundry list of sponsors to come up and join you. One of our largest, our title sponsor, they've been with us a couple of years now, and we definitely couldn't do this event without them, located right up the street, the folks from Southland Credit Union. Like to start by introducing the president and CEO, Ferris Foster. Come on up, Ferris. Tom Lent. And Josh Wilson. Not going to have room for everybody. From Johnny Reb's Southern Roadhouse, Cheryl Carter and Mo Ramon. From Train to Shape, Michael Mandis. From TriZone, Gayla Greeley and Cheryl Perkins. From Sir Speedy, Sean McLean. From Pacific Coachways, the whole family, Tom, Michael Conney, and Jennifer Giddens. From UPS, we've got Beverly Berry. From Care Ambulance, Ashley Haberger. From Golden State Water Company, Del Webb and John Dewey. From the Rotary Club of Los Alamos in Seal Beach, Pat and Ray Eskenazi. From Koda's Kettle Corn, Bob and Cindy Seitz. From Cowboy Dan's Jerky Emporium, we've got Cowboy Dan himself, Dan Stevens. And from H&R Block, we've got Mary Caddy and Christopher Barone. And from Kelly Paper, we have Albert Rodriguez. And I've got everybody, right? I didn't leave anybody out? Okay, terrific. Well, thank you very much, each and every one of you, and the mayor would like to say a couple words?
Again, before we do our final acknowledgement, I'd like to have two of our commissioners come up, Pete Carvahal and Sam. You guys have been instrumental in helping us through this process, too. I want to acknowledge both of you. Oh, Kathy, I'm sorry. Kathy, would you come up here, too, please? Kathy Metzobara.
So a message to the community, these are the people that make this race happen, and Cory definitely underscored what a huge success this race was. You know, a city this size, partnership with the military to be able to have a venue to pull this off. You know, this money that we raise goes back into the community. What we've done, the Parks and Rec, Cory and his team have basically used the race as a way to help fund the shortfall on the pool, as, so it's a sustaining project and a program that we're able to have a lot of fun in doing this, and also to be able to keep that pool up and running as an asset to our city. A lot of people keep coming up to me and asking me about next year, are we going to have a mud run? I don't know, but that seems to be something very popular, not that I'm plugging it or anything, but, but that's what I'm hearing. So again, this had a huge hand for everybody involved. Thank you.
Feel free to sit in the back, try to sit on the front.
I'm fine. I'm here. Here, right here. I'm good.
Yeah.
Would you know they do the oral communication parts?
Please, Steve.
Oh. If you're willing, I'll go get it. I was just gonna say, discussion of the day, if we could bump it up, there's some people who do speed, just a couple pieces.
Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah.
They're gonna continue to, we didn't sign the contract.
No, no, this is for the, the speed bumps and stuff. Oh, okay. Oh, great. They came all the way down. The speed humps are not. It's just the ADA ramps.
Is everyone, is there a speed?
It's the ADA contracts.
Eight.
Yeah, that's in the consent calendar. See, we do that to throw you off. It's like a mayor thing. I was just wondering, since people are coming to speak on it, the investment thing might take a while, if we could just bump it up before...
Right now?
Yeah. If that's okay with everybody. I just wanted to know.
All righty. We're gonna keep the meeting going now. We're gonna move on into oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward and speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. Do I have any speakers? No, all right. You sure? Okay.
Sure.
Now, we're gonna move on to register major expenditures. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll move approval.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Graham Mejia.
Aye.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens.
Aye.
Mayor Protempo.
Aye.
Mayor Edgar.
Aye. All right. We're gonna move on into the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon in one motion unless the council member requests separate action on a specific item. Anybody like to pull any of the items?
I, I just would like to ask two quick questions on the warrants, if I could.
On the warrants, okay. So that'll be 8B.
And, and I can't vote on the meeting minutes because I was not here, so I'm abstaining from those.
Okay, noted. I've got one item here. Let me get, item 8E, the award of the bid of Americans with disability, the ADA ramps. I'm gonna go ahead and pull that one. I've got, we've got some administrative contract things that weren't ready in that packet, so I'm gonna ask the city manager to bring that back when you guys are squared away. Can I get a motion for the balance?
Motion to move the remainder.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Anybody oppose? Next up, going back, item 8A, approval of the minutes. Councilmember Mejia.
No, not the minutes, the warrants.
Oh, you, oh, you're abstaining from the...
Yeah.
Okay, got it. So...
Just a clarification, I was not here at the last meeting, so I am abstaining from the meeting minute votes.
Got that. So item 8B, the warrants.
Okay, on page two, under Commercial Aquatic Services, we have the pool heater repairs. We have two repairs. I was just wondering, isn't the pool heater brand new, and if so, are we already having trouble with it?
The repairs were for the existing heater.
Okay.
That was going on. There were some repair items we needed to do. After we got the new one installed and hooked up, we could then repair the old one.
Okay, and then there's just a couple of lines down under Deckside Pool Services. Is that for something specific? I know we did some work with the canopy, but I believe that was taken care of by the medical center, wasn't it?
Yeah, the, the canopy was piece of mind construction, so that's different.
You know, it's fine. I can...
Deckside Pool Service there are monthly cleaning service. They, they clean the pool five days a week, and the, the charge on there is just the normal monthly bill.
Perfect, perfect. I just didn't recognize it, so thank you. And with that, I'll go ahead and pass it back, mayor.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on that? And if not, I'll ask for a motion to move the warrants.
A motion or move.
Okay, can I get a second?
A second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, nobody opposes, so, and again, city clerk will note that item 8A was actually voted upon with an abstention, Councilmember Mejia. We're gonna go down and move. I'm gonna take something a little bit out of order. Now, next, we're up for the, section nine, which is ordinances. It's been requested by one of the council members that we're gonna move up, actually, item 10B, which is discussion item 10B, which was summary of alley-related safety measures since 2010. City manager, I'm gonna ask for a staff report, please.
Yes, I'll turn this over to Dave Hunt, city engineer.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the city council. Approximately two years ago, we had several residents come into the city council meeting complaining about speeding in alleys, mainly on the one that's over behind Catala Deli, over there, just south of Catala Avenue, about speeders going down there, making it unsafe for, for residents, and particularly unsafe for children, where the children were playing in the parking areas behind the apartments near the garage areas, and how it was unsafe for them. This request was taken to the, the traffic commission. The traffic commission recommended that we install speed limit signs out there, 15 miles per hour, plus do a traffic speed study back then. City council approved that, and we, we did that study. We did the, the speed study back then between just an hour before lunch, an hour after lunch, and the reason for that is because some of the people that complained said that's when the speeders were, were really speeding out there, leaving and going to Catala Deli at the time. So we put a, one of our traffic engineers out there with, in a plain car with a radar gun, and he, he did the speed survey out there and found out that the average speed was about 15.3 miles per hour out there, which was in reasonable limits of that. The council asked the traffic commission also look at various things throughout the entire city, all the alleys, and at that time, the traffic commission then recommended that we put speed limit signs through all the, the alleys in the city and put it on the following year's CIP list, which was done. So kind of almost a year went by before that issue came up to the city council. At that time, the city council changed that recommendation, requested that we actually do a speed, kind of a test on that alley out there, put some speed humps in, do some more tests on it, and see what we could slow the, the traffic down again. So back in, in July, the, the traffic commission approved us going out and doing that. So we went out and did a speed survey back in September. We waited till school started, so we kind of had the normal traffic patterns that you'd experienced during the year. We did a seven-day, 24-hour, you know, per day traffic study out there, so that we could capture the lows and highs of all of the vehicles that were out there. With an average of 400 cars per day that went through there, out there, the, the average speed limit out there was in the 15 to 17 miles per hour range for the average speed out there. We did find several cars out there that were, were speeding out there. In particular, about two to five cars per day were driving faster than 30 miles per hour out there. So that was our, our base level thing out there we covered. We did install some speed humps. Now, the speed humps, I want to just clarify between a speed hump and a speed bump. They're two separate issues. Speed humps are the wider and not as tall, and they don't slow cars down as much as the speed humps, which are typically like one foot wide, and they're about three and a half inches high, so you really have to slow down to kind of go over those. The speed bumps you'll find typically in parking lots for shopping centers, the golf course has them, and then we've all driven out there, and they do slow you down quite a bit. When we did the, back in 2004, when we did a traffic, you know, calming plan out there, they talked about putting speed humps in the alleys was part of one of their recommendations in that. It was listed as a priority, too. It wasn't, you know, real high on their list, but it was listed in there. So we went out and purchased enough for two speed humps to be put out there. We placed them out in the, in the alley, approximately 300 to 400 feet apart out in there. Basically broke the alley up into a thirds, and went out there and then redid the, the survey, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and did that again. And the speeds only really reduced down by one mile an hour out there, so it wasn't a significant effect. But the traffic engineers will point out that traffic does slow down where the humps are, and a lot of times then they speed up, and where we take the speed survey, which was in the middle of the two speed humps, they're back going, you know, close to their full speed again, then they have to slow down again. And it kind of showed that out there. There were still some cars doing 25, 30 miles an hour. The speed humps typically are placed in residential streets to slow the traffic down to about 25 miles an hour. So if you're on a truck or suburban or something like that, you're going 25 miles an hour on that car, you barely feel it, and I will admit that right up front. If you're going on a smaller car, you do that. The reason, another reason we put in the speed humps out there is we also, and we put rubberized ones out there so we could bolt into the ground, and that was to keep the noise level down, and then they're also portable, because people live in bedrooms or close by the alley in some of the cases out in there, and there's been a lot of complaints through other cities about these, the noise factor that goes into there. We invited all the residents in the, that live all along the, the alley there to come to our meeting that we had to talk about the results back in November of 2011. Everybody got a notice delivered to their door inviting them to come. And when we put the speed humps out there in the alleys, we also put two, two boards out there that said, this is a test alley, please call me, email me, you know, we gave them all the information on there. For the record, we had about six phone calls. At that time, there was probably, and it was like three, four, and three against, and, and so that was, you know, a little discouraging when we only got like three, so I figured a meeting would have more people. We had three, three other people come up to the meeting, and they didn't happen to be any of the ones that, that called in, so it was another people there. And we also received two letters and, and an email. Now, one of the letters, and one of the emails, and one of the phone calls all came from the same person, so just, and I included those in the back. But we got people that were in favor of them and wanted more, and thought it was a good idea. They appreciated the effort everybody was going through out there. The three residents that came to the meetings were, were for them, and were just happy to see that we were spending time trying to look at the issue and go through there. We did receive phone calls from people saying, you know, I don't want these near my, my resident. It's noisy. There's a letter in there from one of the residents that, you know, was adamant against them, and also her email about children playing on the speed humps and the noise on it, how she can hear it, and it vibrated through her bedroom. We actually moved that one about 200 feet, no, 150 feet, you know, east of her to try and find a better place for it. It's, it's still out there right now, the two speed, speed humps out there. So we, we had some feedback, not as much as I wanted out in there. So we had, on the November 15th, we had a traffic commission meeting, and basically talked about four options. One was do nothing, that basically the speed limits are an acceptable range of, of an alley that you'd have out there, just like any typical street. You, any street you have out there, you have people that speed on it. This is a pretty small percentage of speeders that are out there, with the average speeds, and like I say, the 15 to 17 miles per hour for a speed limit of 15 miles an hour, you know, that, that's considered kind of an acceptable range. We also talked about, you know, recommending signs we place in all the alleys again, that was an option. One was actually changing the, the speed humps, the speed bumps, and to slow them down and putting more out in there. So we gave them several, several different options to look at. The traffic commission decided what they wanted to do was add some more safety signs out there. We added caution children signs and more 15 mile an hour signs on when the cars left Catala Deli and also drove into the tunnel down at the other end, so when cars entered the alley from midpoints, there's only two points they can, you know, get in there other than the street, that they would see those signs right off the bat, and also then would then pay attention to them, and the speed humps were not too far away. We also painted caution white lines on every entrance to the alley down there, both off the, the main streets and also from the parking lots from the two businesses we just talked about. So those were the, the major function we did. There was also down near Catala Deli where there was, it was hard for cars to see visually when they were leaving their parking lot to the alley, because the bushes have grown too tall, and you couldn't see cars coming. And there's almost, as I say, as Thomas said, there was probably about a skids out there about every day from people almost hitting each other. So we, we talked to, we said... One was actually changing the speed humps, the speed bumps, and to slow them down and putting more out in there. So we gave them several different options to look at. The Traffic Commission decided what they wanted to do is add some more safety signs out there. We added caution children signs and more 15 mile an hour signs on when the cars left Catala Deli, and also drew winnows down at the other end. So when cars entered the alley from midpoints, there's only two points they can, you know, get in there other than the street, that they would see those signs right off the bat, and also then would then pay attention to them, and the speed humps were not too far away. We also painted caution white lines on every entrance to the alley down there, both off the main streets and also from the parking lots, from the two businesses we just talked about. So those were the major function we did. There was also down near Catala Deli where there was... It was hard for cars to see visually when they were leaving their parking lot to the alley, because the bushes have grown too tall, and you couldn't see cars coming. And there's almost, as I say, as Tomlin said, there was probably about a skids out there about every day from people almost hitting each other. So we talked to, we sent a code enforcement officer out there, talked to them. They trimmed the bushes down, so as sitting in your car, you could see cars approaching from, you know, 300 feet away. So you knew what a car was coming out there. So, bottom line is, the Traffic Commission decided that the speed limits that were out there and measured, you know, two times, actually, you know, three times if you include the other one, were within a general accepted range of speeds for alleys out in there. And that was really hard to justify, spending $1,500 each for more speed humps to go out in there. And they were just happy with their recommendations that they made at that time. And so with that, I will then present, you know, answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna bring it back to the council, see if we have any initial comments from the council, and then I'm gonna open it up to public comments. So Jerry, if you wouldn't mind, what are you going to...
Sure. Well, first, I'd like to staff, I think, staff and the Traffic Commission for doing all that they've done up until this point. And I think I was probably the one pushing for something a little bit more, and I'll go into that now. Can I ask real quickly, if we have any idea what was spent on the signs in the second course of action that the Traffic Commission took?
Signs themselves cost only about $35 apiece. We put out four of those, and then we had staff time to put them up, so under a few hundred dollars.
Okay, a few hundred.
Including the paint. They were out there painting other things, and I just, I sent them out there.
The lines, yeah, and I appreciate all that. It shows in the staff report, is this correct, the last time that speed bumps were used in the city of Los Alamitos was in the 1970s?
That is correct. I did some research on some old staff reports and found out that they did do that. They put them in, and then it wasn't too long later that they removed them due to residents' complaints.
Right. Well, I think that I would argue to that, that the city's grown significantly, and when we have people come forward for commissions, and we ask them, "What do you think the number one issue of the city is?" Is always traffic. So I think that since the 1970s to now, there's been an enormous change, and in that, there have been more negative effects on the residents and the businesses. I'm gonna reference in the staff report, page 5 of 6. And you'll see where it says 1, 2, and 3. These are reasons that they think that the speed humps would not be good for the community. Studies of emergency response vehicles, slow delays of 2 to 9 seconds were encountered at each speed hump, depending on the type of emergency vehicle. We've discussed this in the past, and for those of you who have read this agenda item, I just wanted to be very clear, we took this into consideration when we went forward with the speed humps. Most of the time, if not 100% of the time, these emergency vehicles in the apartments will respond on the street where the addresses are located, because in the back, you can't tell where you're at. So I think that that's a non-issue. Number 2, installation of speed humps on roadways is likely to impact adjacent roadways with diverted traffic, and could simply transfer the speed problem. Well, this is my point exactly, we're having a usurping of the traffic from Catala onto the alleys that run parallel with it. And so, to me, that's our desired result, is to divert the traffic using the alleys back onto the street where it belongs. You have 400 to 500 cars going down that alley per day. That, to me, is an excessive amount, considering most of the people who live in apartment row park on the street, and if they don't, they're parking in the back and they're merely leaving. All that extra traffic is from people using those businesses right there, which we want to encourage, but we also want to keep the people of the community safe. And number 3, generally speeds are reduced near the speed hump installation, although the speed can vary dramatically between speed humps as drivers may become irritated or try to take... Or, sorry, try to make up for lost time. You know, I think that makes my point, too. Whether or not we have the speed humps, we have people speeding down these alleys. And I would have to argue that the speeds are far in excess of 15 to 20 miles per hour. I live in the alley that we're speaking about myself. I've walked out to go to a neighbor's coming around the corner and was almost hit by a car that had to be going at least 30 miles per hour. And Dave, you were very fair, you said there are a couple cars that do that. But I think that your number is not representative of how many cars are traveling that fast. You made a statement that... That the speed strip that you used to test how fast the cars were going was in between the two speed humps?
Correct.
Okay, well, I was there, I looked at it, the first time you did the test, it was right up against the speed hump, and then it was not very far away from it. So I don't think that did justice to telling how fast the cars were actually traveling in the alley. My hope was to reach out to the council members through the community and see if we couldn't put into place something that would protect the children specifically of those alleyways. I've brought up before that the kids in the apartments, they don't have backyards to play in, like many kids do. And so they play on the back parking pit, excuse me, on the back parking pad. And one of our neighbors was just telling me today that one of the kids were playing ball, the ball rolled out into the alley, and like kids do, they don't luck. The little boy ran out to grab the ball, and the car stopped just inches from him, which was very lucky. But if we had had speed bumps, those cars would not have been able to travel that fast. I should say speed bumps, not speed humps, to be clear. My recommendation would be to make sure that we address this issue, we address the safety that is lacking in the alleys. I think that the businesses that abut the residents, that's where you're gonna see more of the traffic. The other alleys, I've talked to some people, yes, they're interested in having speed humps, but I don't think they have the same kind of traffic as those apartments that, again, abut those businesses. I think that my recommendation would be the larger speed humps, or bumps, which is it? Help me out, Dave. I can't keep it straight.
You're recommending the bumps, which are smaller, narrower, but higher, to slow you way down.
Well, and I've seen, I've been to some of the conferences, and I've seen, they're not that narrow, and there are differing kinds, so I think that we could look into that a little bit more. But I'm recommending that we have more per the alley. I don't think that what we have two in an alley, that how... What's the distance on that alley?
It's roughly 900 feet.
900 feet, and we have two small speed humps. I don't think it's significant enough to do what we were desiring it to do. I appreciate the signs, but, you know, people don't pay attention to the signs on the freeway that tell you what speed to go, and they certainly aren't listening to it in the alleyways either. I will address, there is a letter from a resident, and also I'd like to note, I brought in a letter from the resident who is in favor. I have a text from a woman who I will turn over, who has said, you know, "It's gotten to be to the point where they're just looking to move out of the city, because they don't seem to be feeling like they're getting the response from us that they would like." One of the residents who sent in a non-support for the speed humps actually makes a good point, which justifies what I was saying is... And I'm reading from the first attach... Attachment 2, and it's the fifth paragraph down. "The speed humps are..." Sorry, I can't read it from here. "The speed humps appear to be... Have little or no consequence in reducing the rate of speed," which I agree. "They do not have the same effect as a typical speed bump that are installed in places like shopping centers and parking lots. They rarely... They barely are felt when you pass over them. And if you really wanted to slow down traffic in the alleys, then you would recommend speed bumps." I just think that even the people who are not in support of maybe the speed bumps know that there's a problem in the alley, that there's excessive speeding, there's dangers to the residents. And as long as we're careful and we strategically place these, I don't think they'll have a negative impact on the residents who live there. So with the right to readdress, Mayor, after we hear from the community, I'd like to have a second chance to address anything.
Not a problem. Councilmember Kuzumoto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So David, so I had a chance to drive over these speed humps, and they are... They were just so insignificant. The disrepair of the alleyway itself was far worse than the speed humps. So, you know, I understand why the results are what they are. I did ask Mr. Mendoza if there's some way to change the experiment to use something different. But were we constrained to use the speed humps instead of bumps?
I recommended the speed humps along with the Traffic Commission out there, not the narrower, smaller ones. It was something they felt is a first step to try and, you know, see the effect of it. That was the smart thing to do. You gotta remember, when... If you have a, let's say, 10% of the cars or less are the ones that are speeding, you know, you're making everybody else pay the penalty of that. And the Traffic Commission was mainly trying to say, "Well, enforce the speed with, you know, more signage, you know, more awareness." Having the small humps out there would be, yes, they don't affect the speed as much as they do, but it's still, it's another visual reminder that, hey, the speed limit's 15 miles an hour. It's more of an educational process that they were going for. And just to be honest with you, they didn't feel the speeds out there were that significant to even require the speed humps.
So perhaps, maybe there's a philosophical, you know, kind of question here. Are the alleyways, are they throughways, or are they just accessways? And so if they're accessways, then I think, you know, anything we can do to make it difficult to pass through, such as speed bumps, might... Then again, for the safety of the people that have to traverse the alleyway, would slow the traffic down, it would perhaps limit the cars in there to people that need to be in there. Do you know what I mean, instead of making it a throughway? Now, I did ask a question, like, right out here in the public work yard, there are those yellow speed bumps.
Correct.
And they're just very nasty driver, I mean, they're just even slow. I mean, I don't know why we didn't try that. That would have been a very more, to me, a more interesting experiment to run. There we would have data to really see, do you modify the behavior? Do you have, instead of 400 cars, do you have 200 cars passing through? And, you know, thereby, the speeds go down, the throughput of cars actually decreases. So that would be an experiment I would like to see us run, and see what kind of results we get. And then see if we have complaints from the residents in that area, because they do understand about the noise. And then their comfort needs of use of that accessway to their garages and their driving, and their parking spots. So we're not gonna look at that, I take it from looking at the report.
Well, also, the... Just went to speed. The speed bumps have had a history of other cities where the city's actually been sued for putting those out in public right of ways from cars, damage to cars, losing control, you know, of their car and hitting things. They're kind of frowned upon on city, on their...
No, I understand, I was on the Traffic Commission, we had a long, we had long fiery debates about these.
You were a part of that.
Those were on residential roads such as in Carrier Road, not in the apartment row, and these are alleyways. So I think that part we never tackled when I was on the Traffic Commission, so...
I did go out and go through some other cities and found a few speed humps in cities, no bumps, you know, that cities owned, and they were all in the hump type.
Over here in Long Beach, El Dorado Park, on Pioneer, I think there are these speed humps, the long gradual rise and, you know, the falls. And those are somewhat... They do calm the traffic down. I mean, they're very... They're a different design, but, again, I drove over the hump, you know, the hump, and I didn't even know I drove over it, to be honest. And I wasn't speeding, I was just going, you know, I know it's an alleyway, I'm trying to stick to the safe, what's safe speeds. But I would just encourage us to look at, why don't we try some of those yellow speed bumps? Let's see if it really modifies the behavior, do we have reduced car counts? Do we have reduced speeds? And do we get complaints from the people that are actually using the alleyway to access to their driveways and their garages? So that'd be my thoughts on it. And back to you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protempo?
I'm gonna save my comments till we hear from the public.
Sure. Councilmember Stevens?
You know, I have to agree with Councilmember Mejia. I also checked to see if it was a problem for emergency responders, and it's not. Fire trucks, engine companies will not fit down the alleys on any given day, just simply the way the cars are parked and everything. But whenever you told me that your study simply reduced the speed in the alley by one mile per hour, that concerned me. And we do have an issue. I also live in apartment row, and in fact, ever since we did the renovation on the alleys, especially between Lexington and Noel, it's so smooth that people are driving faster. And so I think that's part of it. And it's probably some of us residents that are the ones that are doing it. And so we have to find other solutions to it. I know that the size of the vehicle does determine that, because I also went down where the speed bumps were, and I saw a larger vehicle, just, it didn't even affect it. Where in my car, it sort of jars you all over the place. A couple of other things I want to ask about. The signs that we're using, they're small. And I'm just wondering if we had larger signs possibly showing children running, actually, the figures of children running out there, if that might be a more awakening to people, if we use some more of those.
Well, the sign we did show does show a child running on it. And it is on more of the smaller size, they do have bigger ones. But for an alley, you know, your car is only, you know, 15 feet away from it when you pull up to it, to have, you know, when you're coming out of those parking lots, to have it too much bigger than that could be considered an eyesore. But they do make them bigger, but they're maybe twice the size is what is out there right now.
Yeah, I just am a firm believer that whenever a parent or someone sees a sign like that, that's large enough. And in yellow, you know, it does make you slow down automatically. The other thing I was gonna question, too, you said the painting runs about $100, just to do the painting on the street?
No, I said that with the signs were about... I said the whole thing was like a hundred, a couple hundred dollars to put the painting and the four signs up.
What if just the painting alone, what does that do? What does that cost?
You know, it's done by our crew, they had to paint from other jobs. I don't have a separate price for that.
All right. I'm just wondering if possibly more painting down through the alley, or alleys, and all of the alleys would, again, remind people what the speed limit is in the alley. And just sort of a broad white stripe, or yellow stripe, or something like that, just to remind people as they're going through.
And that's like, we have the signs that, you know, before each speed hump, there's a yellow sign that says, "Speed, hump ahead," you know, and there's two of those out there, you know, coming from each direction, so you know that they're coming, you know, towards you. So we actually, for a small alley, we have quite a few signs in there. And, you know, for that one, you know, 900-foot reach, there's, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, probably six signs out there, or seven signs, in that small reach.
All right.
Plus, the speed humps themselves are bright with the yellow stripes across, you know, black with the yellow, and that was also there for visual, so that would give them another, you know, hey, I'm supposed to be going a certain speed. It's generally been the philosophy of the Traffic Commission, so that's why all this was done.
The last thing that I'm gonna mention, and it's something that, I don't know if it's even possible, but to me, it makes sense. So what about random stop signs in the alley?
Well, it's against the law to just put a stop sign in the middle of an alley to just slow down traffic.
How about to stop traffic, not to slow it down?
Well, no, you can't. You can't just put a stop sign in the middle of an alley just to do that.
Wow. Answers that question. Seems like a great idea. Now, why?
You know, the traffic engineer told me it's in the handbook, and you're not allowed to do it, so I didn't argue with them.
All right.
If I may, if I may...
Go ahead.
So my understanding is that an unwarranted stop sign, after, over time, it gets unused, and people just end up running it. And that's why, it has to be warranted, meaning that there's a need, there's a statistical need for it, a dangerous intersection that needs to be controlled by such a device. It's in the Uniform Traffic, whatever, the UQ, Q...
Yeah, whatever, that book is.
Yeah, that book, Traffic Control Devices.
Yep, that's it.
All right, before I open it up to a public comment, just a couple observations. When I looked at this item, I looked at it from three perspectives. First of all, looked at the history of the evaluation of this issue through the Traffic Commission. I know Councilmember Kuzumoto was on there. You know, I do think that there's a big difference between Parkway, speed humps, and what you have going on in the alley. So I also looked at the public safety side of this thing, the emergency first responders. Every time we tout our, you know, we get there in three minutes, you know, does this have any effect on it? But, you know, I looked to people on our council, like, you know, Councilmember Stevens, who's on the Orange County Fire Authority, they deal with this in a lot of different cities. You know, the public position, or the popular position is, no one wants speed humps. And you could even see it, quite frankly, through the staff recommendations, like, look, we didn't really want to do that. And because, you know, you guys, you know, you're, as a industry, I think it's been something that you've been getting away from. But then I go to my last criteria, which is the objectives of this council. And when it comes to the council, much like I look at the commission, as I look to people up here that actually have a direct effect, Councilmember Mejia, Councilmember Stevens, their perspective on this. Jerry's invited me out numerous times to the alleyways, sometimes to get into it, but most of the time, just to go see what's going on out there.
He didn't show.
Yeah, I would say, back down, I back down. But the thing that's most interesting to me is, you know, we, as council members, we get a lot of calls to go out in the community and talk to people. And, you know, I, you know, I... And, you know, I, you know, I, I ended up talking to Jerry about this issue because I was getting, I was at the 7-Eleven down there, I was going into that alleyway. It has, it's a kind of a combo. It has high hedges and kind of a blind alley, and no, you know, no caution. People are just blowing through there. I think we have a true public safety opportunity here. And it's probably an unorthodox, true public safety opportunity. You know, right now, where I'm sitting, I want to hear public comment, but I think Jerry's point, and in the staff report on page five, item two, when she talks about installation of speed humps on the roadway is likely to impact adjacent roadways, and basically divert traffic out of alleys, that's absolutely what we're trying to do here. So, the only thing that I couldn't tell is, Councilmember Kuzamoto, you're, as we're trying to frame this up into what potentially might be an action coming out of this, is I'm hearing, maybe we continue this thing through an experiment and use real speed bumps. Jerry's perspective seemed to be more global, as we'll pick sections of the city and focus on it, or high-risk areas. So as we get closer to thinking about where we're going, I'm kind of interested on, you know, what we're really trying to do there, whether it's another experiment or an actual implementation. So with that, what I'd like to do is open it up to public comment. And I know that we have some folks in the audience that came forward with Councilmember Mejia's assistance, and I'd like to see if anybody'd like to come forward and talk on this issue.
Mayor, can I add one thing?
Please.
At, at the exits, coming from the businesses into the alley, there used to be stop signs, but they kept getting destroyed, so they just gave up on those. So, we have tried other things that don't seem to be working either.
Yeah, and the painting, the street, and the signs, they, they're so overdone.
There's no deterrent.
I don't think anybody's paying attention.
There's just no deterrent.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to public comment. Anybody like to come up? Come on up. Sure, come on up.
Good evening.
My name is Rena Rios, and I live over here by the alley between Walnut and Oak, Jiffy Loop. There's no speed limit there, no signs of anything. And it's been an ongoing situation there. Speeding. We notice that some of the theaters are, the guys that work there at Jiffy Loop, but we do get some, you know, other people that drive through really fast. And I'm just waiting for them to hit my apartments there. You know, it's, it's really dangerous, and there's more and more kids moving into that area, you know? And then, after school, sometimes the kids will walk through the alley. And I thought I'd bring this up to your attention, you know, about that alley there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask, do you support the speed bumps or no?
Yes, I do. I absolutely do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Javier.
Good evening, Council, Javier Mejia, Los Allo resident. I've spoke on this speed, alley speedway issue a couple of times. Todd, I'd like to ask a question. If a vehicle is traveling down Cotella at twice the posted speed limit, is there a stiff line for that?
Yep.
Okay, so, I, I understand that we're talking about cars that are going twice the posted speed limit in the alley, and we're saying that's okay, it's reasonable. It's not just the kids that are a danger, you know? I'm not getting any younger, and I have, time after time after time, played dodge the cars, especially when you have cars coming in both directions. They don't care who's out there, you know? And I have put my own orange cones out there to try and slow down, and they just get hit and wiped out. It's, it's, I don't know what, what these people are thinking, to be honest with you. And I don't think generally it's the residents that live in those alleyways. It seems like a lot of just pass-through. Councilmember Mejia did state that years ago, there were stop signs coming out from where the Drwiner Schnitzel is now, and where the Cotella Deli is, right at the wall. I think another idea might be to put a perpendicular speed bump right there, as cars are exiting from the deli into the alley, because they don't stop. They just, you know, and we've been pretty lucky, but there have been incidents, and I know those garageways have been driven right into multiple times. That's, you know, I mean, there's, there's a myriad, I'm sure, of different ideas. Speed bumps, I mean, big wide humps, as Warren was saying, those slow people down, have less noise. I don't know if they're, you know, other tests, you know, are definitely a great idea to continue. The, the bot dots, the little reflective dots, would be another one. I know that they make noise. And I know that residents may complain about some of that noise, but at what point do we weigh safety over residents, whether they're little ones, or adults, or elderly, versus somebody's, the noise? The noise is gonna get louder. We're in a small town with a, a lot of traffic on Cotella and just about everywhere, and you kind of sometimes have to get used to it, and most people do. We're not talking about putting an expressway in. I think that would generate more concern. But sometimes you, you have to kind of decide that safety is the number one concern here. And, what else? The hedges, it's great that they cut that down. It'd be nice if they kept it up. That would be, you know, really helpful, especially down at the Wiener Schnitzel, and that tends to get pretty high. And that end of the alley is really narrow with that Edison pole right there and the driveway. So, gosh, I had another idea. But I do think that adding at least one additional speed bump or hump, or ditch or dip would be a great idea somewhere in the center. Because cars traveling at 20 or 25 miles per hour, you realize that the arrow, the alleyways are much narrower than a roadway. And then with the, going twice the posted speed limit, I think that the dangers are significantly higher than they would be if somebody were going twice the speed down Cotella at night, when there's nothing there. I mean, it's a straight shot, you got a lot of room on both sides, even though it's illegal. I think that that would endanger the public less than somebody going twice the speed down the alleyway. It just doesn't make sense to me. And, you know, people are always, don't like change, but sometimes you kind of have to step out and do something.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Javier. Anybody else like to comment? Good evening.
Good evening. We've heard dots, humps, bumps. I can reduce the speed on those, reduce the number of cars in those alleys with one simple change. Make them one-way. Half the cars aren't gonna be traveling on. Makes it a little more difficult for the residents, but we've already heard that noise shouldn't be an issue. One-way means they would have to go around a block potentially to go into their parking areas. A little difficulty for a lot of safety. It's about time, maybe, for the Planning Commission, with the City Council, maybe, to have a workshop. Because we've obviously got quite a few ideas on where to go with this. Why don't we do the old-fashioned thing and get to the community and invite them in and sit down and say, prioritize this. I don't live there, so it doesn't affect me. But let's have the community prioritize. What should we be doing with the alleys? Should we go one-way? Does that provide too much of a barrier for you? Should we put in large bumps? Are you willing to live with the noise? This is a great opportunity for the City Council to potentially do a workshop, get involved with the community and the community's issues, find out what their concerns are and what their priorities are, and then try to solve this once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and bring it back to the City Council. Councilmember Mejia, we'll start with you again.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there was a recommendation by staff that the police monitor the alleys a little bit more, and maybe that might cut down the traffic. And if you've ever seen, in Los Alamitos, I've grown up here, so you'll see the police address a certain area for a short period of time. It does curtail the behavior, but after that presence is no longer there, the behavior returns. Unless, of course, you have red light cameras, and then nothing gets through that. And, so, I think that law enforcement could be better served focusing on other things. The speed humps would be, in essence, helping them, because that's not something that they would have to do. It would curtail the behavior and with no time taken away from the police department. One of the things that was brought up earlier by one of the speakers is that the alleyways are very narrow. So if a child runs out, there's really not a whole lot of room for the cars to go. I mean, even if a car were to try and swerve not to hit a child when they're traveling that fast, and there isn't an outlet for them to take as a secondary option, chances are, they're gonna hit that child. They may not hit them straight on, but they will probably hit them. And one of my concerns is, based on a personal experience, my nephew was playing as a young boy in the apartments, and a ball went out into the alley. He ran to get it, made it across, grabbed the ball, turned around, and a car hit him going 40 miles per hour. Luckily, he had the ball in front of him, because it kept his spleen from being destroyed. It was just a tear, and it was able to heal. But that's the best-case scenario. That's not necessarily something we can guarantee. So, as far as the one-way, I appreciate the recommendation. I just don't think it's gonna stop the traffic. We have people coming through, and I'm not gonna make any, I'm not gonna name anyone specifically, but there are groups in the community that use that alley as a thoroughfare to get to where they're going, so they won't be late. They use it to visit those businesses. And I don't think being one-way would deter them one way or the other. So, I think that the majority of people who have spoken tonight, the letter that I brought, the emails that I have, the people that weighed in on this in the beginning, they have pretty much said that they're in favor. Again, with regards to the noise factor, we can, we can address that. We can make sure that they're strategically placed. We're looking to not impact the community negatively, but provide a safety, a public safety product for them, so that they, they can live a better quality of life. And I don't know if this is appropriate, and I know that the issue of money has been brought up, or, you know, addressing the budget and such. We have two things, we do have a large reserve, and that's tax money that is used for one-time issues. So, Mayor, you are right on the dot. I think that the residents that abut the businesses are the ones that are most severely impacted. Maybe we look at that as, moving forward, the area that we want to look into. And I, I will tell you this, we've been talking about it for two years, and to put it off for longer, it makes me very nervous, especially since, and I'm not making up any stories, the little boy running out to get the ball was almost hit. I mean, one loss of a life, when we've been looking at this for two years, would make me feel like we were, you know, negligent in our, in our duties. So, with that, I'll go ahead and pass it back.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Kuzamoto?
No, I have nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Mar- Marilyn?
Yes, thank you. This has been, as we, as has been said, this has been something that's been talked about for a long time. The alleys are an issue. Not only do the residents that live in this community use the alleys, because they, because you don't have to live here very long, when you find the fastest and easiest way to get where you want to go, when there's traffic on the main streets, which we have a lot of. Traffic is something that we are not gonna get rid of. We just have to learn to manage it better. And I don't live, I don't have an alley behind my house. I'm glad I don't. Sometimes it's good to have an alley, but for the reasons that, that I've heard, I'm happy that I don't have one. And I certainly would not argue with the people that live on an alley. I, I think that, the comment that's been made, that most of the safety vehicles, the fire department and everything, will go down the street, probably will not use the alley. I have been on this alley many times, and I didn't really feel that the humps did too But I think that we need to be fair, because this isn't the only alley that has a problem. We've had a lovely lady come here that lives in, over here, on, and is talking about the alley on Walnut. And there's just as many children in those alleys, there's just as much concern. And I know, especially, she's very much correct, I have been there and seen the kids walk down the alley from Oak. So it's a huge concern there. Their safety is very, is very, should be something that we really are concerned about. You know, one of the letters here said, made a comment about, why would parents let their children play in the alley? Well, you know, if you don't have a yard to play in, children are gonna go where they can play. And there's those pads there, and it's just a nuisance. That I, there, there's a legal term for that, and I don't know what it is. Some kind of a...
Attractive nuisance.
Attractive nuisance. There you go. Thank you very much. And we would be very remiss if we didn't address this. Because kids are gonna go there. They're kids. And, you know, I'm, that's just what's gonna happen. People have a habit of finding the best way to go. And people that drive through our community on a regular basis, it doesn't take them very long to, to figure out that if Cotella is going real slow, they can just slip over to any one of these alleys and get to the boulevard a little faster. So, I'm, I think that, that, I, I appreciate the comment about having the community speak. Well, we had the opportunity for the community, they were hand-delivered, I believe, notices about a meeting, and look how few commented. You know, it looks like, from all the comments, that the bumps are gonna be the way to go. They're gonna slow people down, and maybe, in a short period of time, they will quit using that alley as a throughway. And, or, slow down. So, if that's what the majority of the council wants, I'm, I'm all for it. I, I, and I, I'm not interested in doing it as a test. I think we just need to do it. And we'll find out, we'll find out how many people are really against it. And, you know, sometimes, we just have to do what is the right thing to do. And my concern, as I think all of us, is, it isn't just children. I mean, adults are important, too. And, you know, anyone, when you, when you try to go down these, any of the alleys in our community, they're narrow, and most of the time, if there's an oncoming car, I kind of pull over to let that car go past. It's impossible for two to go through. So, but, but I would just like us not to just focus on this alley. I think that we've heard about another alley that is very much of, of a concern, and so we, we need to address that issue also.
Great. Thank you. All righty. Councilmember Stevens?
You know, I have to agree with pretty much everybody up here. We have to have a solution to it. If it's going to be speed bumps, then it's something we have to do. I actually live halfway down an alley, and so I think I see more traffic than anyone. But I can also tell you that my neighbors are very courteous. Everyone does pull over and let everyone have a chance for access both ways. You know, we talk about children playing in the alley. Well, that's just one part of it, but you also have young adults on skateboards, bikes, going up and down the alleys, as opposed to going out on Cotella, because, again, the easiest access to where you live is going to be off the alley. I mean, I never park out in front of my place. I come in off the alley, and I pretty much live on the backside of it. And I have, if I have to hear the noise of a speed bump, I'll take it in a second. You know, I'd take that over a scream or, or anything else, any day. Quick question, too. So far, we've had two different people mention the area where Cotella Deli, where the driveway is right there, and also where the Wiener Schnitzel is. I guess my question would be back to Councilmember Mejia. Is it the cars going out of the parking lot there?
Yes.
Is there any way of restricting that, to where anyone exiting that parking lot for both that Cotella Deli or for that entire center would exit out onto Cotella, as opposed to exiting out in the alley? Just make it a one-way entrance into those, that parking area?
It was probably a condition of approval, the time they went in, that they had to have dual exits out their property. So, any change in that, we'd probably have to go back to the Planning Department on a, on a variance for what they have, their conditions of approval for that site.
I guess my question would be, does this, that make sense? You know? Is it gonna lessen the, go ahead.
When you're coming out of those exits from the businesses into the alley, it's very narrow, and so people are... very narrow, and so people are proceeding out because of the hedges, which are now cut, but that's not always the case. I, I think that if those were, I don't know if it's possible to widen them or to round the edges so that they're not having to go out around, because that's what I see is they're, they're trying to keep from going up over the curb, and so they're going further out into the alley, which they don't need to. If we could round those or widen that, that berth there, I don't know.
Those, those could be widened, but you would lose a couple of parking spots. As we all know, parking is at a premium in this city.
Sure. Well, maybe if we could, do you understand what I'm saying, Dave?
Yeah, I do.
If you round those edges, it gives them the ability to turn at a closer radius-
Yeah. The starting alley was an angle already going, so they don't-
And obviously, that's the landowner, that would be up to the landowner, but, you know.
Yes.
It would be something that would help.
Yeah, the only reason I even brought it up is because even myself, when pulling out there, it's the same situation, you come out very slowly, but there's always going to be a car coming up the alley from Lexington. All right? So you, out of courtesy, you pull up into the private property of that apartment all the way right there-
And that happens a lot.
-to let the, the next car come through, or the other way around. And I'm just wondering if, if the merchants along there could see the sense behind it, having that just access and then exit out onto Cattella? And if we can possibly approach them with it and see what they say?
I think Stephen and I can get together and look at all the issues and talk to the residents, I mean, owners out there about it.
Okay. Great. That's it.
Okay. So just to kind of frame this thing up a little bit, see if we can get to an action that's more specific. One of the questions I had was definitely seeing the price in here for speed humps. What, what's the price for a speed bump? Per, per bump?
Probably about eighty percent of the humps. So they're, they're smaller, they don't have as much material in them, they're, they're at the same cost to install. So probably about eighty percent of that.
Okay. So about twelve hundred. And if we were to look at, let's take, and again, I'm just throwing this out there as a suggestion, if we were to take Green Street north all the way, the, you know, the entire route, and Walnut, again, it's two corridors identified as, as corridors that we have issues. Approximately, you said, how many feet off? And it's a nine-hundred-foot alley, how many humps are we talking about?
Well, are you talking about going from Green Street all the way over to Los Alamos Boulevard, all the way down, or just that one side?
I'm saying the Green Street alleyways behind Green, you know, up along the businesses, that whole corridor.
Noel.
With three, with three humps, because the two are not significant.
Right. Yeah. You're just adding an extra, extra hump, so you have three in there, and probably Walnut, it's, it's smaller, it's not as long, probably leading, at least two over there, so you're talking five.
Okay.
But you're talking about the whole corridor?
Well, I, I'm just wondering, is the-
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
-the whole corridor is kind of what I'm thinking.
Yeah. If you're, if you're talking about taking it from Lexington all the way over to almost Los Alamos Boulevard-
Yeah.
It's, that distance is three times the, the test alley. So, you know, you're, you're going to need nine, you're going to have three, three sections of, of three, so there's nine will have to go in there, plus another, at least two over there. So you have to eleven.
Okay. So I guess where I'm at right now is I'd like to frame up a project that potentially is that entire corridor done, and, and then potentially the Walnut piece done, and then do an evaluation to kind of mend in with, Councilmember Kuzmato said, is then do an evaluation and see how productive it is, send that to the Traffic Commission and have them do an evaluation of how productive that's been, but really take a substantive act now to get this thing going. I, I would support, you know, what I've heard up here, which is, this is a public safety item that we really don't need to kick down the line, and the funding part of that, you know, we're in the throes right now of our mid-year budget review as we get ready to close. Decent story now, harder story next year, but this goes in that category of, of an investment, I think, too, that we need to, that we need to make. So, you know, I won't make that motion. Councilmember Mahia, I think you brought this item forward, but I, I would just, I'm trying to give you a suggestion that potentially is something we can get very specific, so that we can get this thing moving into something that's actually real, that'll be done, and then mix and what Warren's talking about with, because I, I wouldn't want to see us plaster every alley in the city-
Right.
...with the speed bumps.
Mm-hmm.
But, but I would say, as a person that goes, you know, Cattella, when you're running short on time, I've seen people just bridge right off and go and use that whole corridor. So I, I don't know, that, that's what I'm thinking, Jerry, but I'd, I'd be open if you had any sort of a motion.
No, that was, that was what I was, my intent was, was to address the, the homes that, again, abut the businesses, because I think they have the more significant impact. So if we want to start off with Lexington to Los Alamos Boulevard, the alleys on Green Street-
And, and you're just talking about the alley behind the businesses?
Yes.
Not the other two that are out there in apartment?
No. Not Howard or Farquhar.
That's right.
Not, not at this point. I mean, we need to see if it's going to be significant. And then also, the gal who came up earlier who addressed it was over on Chestnut?
Walnut.
Walnut, I'm sorry, Walnut. And go out and look at that. And when you do that, when you go out and walk those, or whatever you're going to do, I would love to be a part of that, if you could give me a heads-up a little ahead of time, so I can build it into my schedule.
Okay.
I'm very interested in this project. And that would be my motion, is to address those issues, are those areas, and should we find success with those, and other residents come forward in like areas that would like those for protection purposes, that we, we keep an open mind moving forward.
Councilmember Stevens, just since you're unaffected, you know, is that motion cover everything if we hit the secondary parts within, and we'll get to that, if we hit the secondary parts after we do the initial install, send it to the Traffic Commission looking for alternative measures?
No, I have, I have to agree on that, and then hit the secondary portion, but we've got to do something right away on all of them. And so if this is going to be the first part of it, let's do it. So I'll second Councilmember-
So I've got a first and a second. Dave, can I add another comment?
Do you want to include the speed limit signs, the caution children's signs, and the other signs we've already done in part of this putting that in?
Well, it's spent, though, right? I mean, it's-
Well, I mean, for, for the additional alleys.
Oh. Oh, okay. What's the pleasure of the council?
Well, I think that you could maybe put one at the entrance on each side. I don't think you need one in the middle. And not only that, but that one's facing the same way, the, the traffic doesn't even see it unless they turn and look up, which I don't think is, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, it's not very effective.
Yeah. We, we will have to put in a sign, though, that says "Speed Hump Ahead." That's, that's going to require for both directions.
Well, maybe that's what we do. Could we put a, you know, I will tell you, so many people have said they had no idea that the speed limit in the alleys was fifteen miles per hour. So I think at least one sign in the alley to give them a heads-up. And, and I don't even know that that'll be an issue, because with those larger humps, I don't think they're going to be able to build up too much speed in between, as long as we have those three.
Right. Councilmember Stevens, you had one other comment?
Yeah. Now, we're talking about putting up the signs in additional alleys, right? Right now?
Well, we're talking about the alleys that go from Lexington down to Los Alamos Boulevard and the one on Walnut.
Yeah, there's a required amount of signage that they're going to have to put up anyway. And then, but the question is, Dave, bigger picture, phase-two type stuff, are you going to mark out other alleys for the cautionary signs, I think is the question?
Yes, we, we can, we can come up with that recommendation after we do this first phase.
Now, I'm wondering, you know, honestly, you know, it's good to go ahead and tell people what the speed limit is at the beginning of the alley, how about a reminder after they've started to get up speed? So down the alley a little bit as opposed to right when they first pull in the alley, because they don't seem to be working right now. And possibly if we have the children's sign halfway down the alley, or one-third of the way, and then from the other direction, too, that it might have more impact, might just make somebody slow down.
But if we put in the, the speed bumps, as you're talking about, every two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty feet, they're going to have to slow down.
Well, right now, I'm talking about the additional alleys-
Oh.
-as opposed to the, the first phase of this. So the second phase, I'm just wondering if we can incorporate those signs into it right now as part of the first phase.
The only thing, Councilmember Stevens, I'm concerned about is we'll install those and then go speed bump crazy, and then we'll have to re-sign them after the fact. And so I, I'm, that's why I was just kind of wondering if we might do that in phase two, but your call on that.
No, I'm only talking about the one caution, you know, children at play, you know, signs. Because we've decided we're not going to put in the speed bumps until we determine what's going on in that first segment behind the businesses. But just add additional signs, possibly two or three per, I'm getting a no here.
City manager, do you have a comment there?
I think that we need a clarification of what the motion is, and, and maybe if it would help, we just talk about the alley between Lexington and Los Alamos Boulevard, the alley behind the businesses, and Walnut. And then what additional, you know, speed bumps?
Yeah. Let me help with that. So that was very specifically the motion. And Dave, I, I'm going to give you a little bit of a hard time here, and then we start throwing in the sign stuff. And the sign thing, I, I think that the motion, the essence of the motion, and believe me, Jerry will stop me if I'm wrong, but I, I think that the, the point of it is, whatever's required to institute what we want to get done, do it, whatever that is. I think what Councilmember Stevens is talking about is, look, plus, you know, if there's anything that we can do preemptive out there that's not already been thought of or done, you know, that should be something to look at, but since we don't have a cost, we haven't seen any sort of a, a strategy of handling that. I think the preference, at least the motion that I heard, was that it focuses on the secondary phase, too. And we'll package data that we'd collect through a traffic study after we've done the humps, signage, and potentially so we don't have to do it again. So I, I think that's the motion. And I've got two head nods up here. Any other comments? Okay, with that, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and nobody opposes. We're going to move on to the next item. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go backwards to the item on ordinances. We handled that one a little bit of out of order, so that we can get some comment on that. But the next up is item 9A, ordinances, consideration of the amendment to the Los Alamos Municipal Code to provide for one city council meeting per month. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item before you tonight requests council consideration of an amendment to the municipal code to provide for one city council meeting per month. This item is brought to you for consideration based on what is most cost-effective, efficient, and productive. Preparing for and conducting city council meetings twice a month keeps staff in the council on a continuous cycle, which limits available time for planning, execution, and evaluation of projects, both large and small. Preparing for and conducting council meetings involves all department heads, the city clerk, the city attorney, and me, on a routine that dictates that we are either preparing for each meeting or following up on items from each meeting on a continuous basis. Since the city has a limited number of staff members, many of whom have taken on multiple job duties, transitioning to one regularly scheduled council meeting per month would improve productivity and efficiency. The cost savings that would be realized would be over twenty thousand dollars per year, based on the average cost of seventeen hundred dollars per meeting. Last year, there were thirty-one meetings, and the year before, we had thirty meetings. So given the same pattern, we would still have eighteen or nineteen meetings annually to tackle the city's business, but save over twenty, twenty thousand dollars. Staff is suggesting that the monthly council meetings be held on the third Monday of the month, as there are often conflicts with the first Monday of the month. As always, the mayor and the council would retain the ability to schedule study sessions and special meetings as necessary, and I could request that a special meeting be scheduled should the need arise. It is recommended that council monthly stipend would remain at four hundred dollars monthly, and I would be happy to answer any questions the council should have.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to follow the same procedure on this one, is I'm going to open it up to the city council. We're going to go ahead and make some comments, and then I'm going to open it up. This is an ordinance, so I want to get public comment and see if there's any opinions in the community. I'm going to go ahead and start with Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you for doing this report. And I think the big thing in here was whenever I saw the cost of preparation for the meetings and the savings that we can have by doing that. And I also know that we do have the ability to call a meeting, and that you would have the ability to call a meeting if need be. And I, I'll be honest with you, I, I want to hear a little bit more on it, but right now, it sort of looks like a win-win situation. I'm not quite sure why the stipend would remain the same, you know, you know, on this at the four hundred dollars, but I'll let everybody else speak to that. And I guess partially is because we're still doing the work, whether we're in a meeting or not, with everything else that we do. But that's all I have right now.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Kuzmato?
Right now, no questions at this time. I want to hear public comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Great. Thank you. Mayor Protempo?
I think this is a really good idea, and I think that we should give, the first time this came up was Councilmember Mahia, and she brought this up, and I thought that was really a good idea. We, many of us serve on other boards connected with the city, and we have sometimes quarterly meetings, and they have large budgets. Sometimes monthly meetings, as I believe Troy, the San District is monthly. And I know the Fire Authority used to have, it had over thirty cities, and the whole time, the ten years that I was on it, we met once a month. So with the ability for us to call a special meeting at any time, staff through our city manager can do that. We all have very close contact on a daily basis, we're such a small community, on a daily basis with our staff, and anytime anything comes up, you know, we have special meetings now that are called. I do, I do think that I would like to have the consideration of reducing the stipend for the city council members to three hundred and fifty a month from four hundred. I think that would just add, add to the positive flavor of this whole thing.
Okay. Great. Councilmember Mahia?
This came up during budgetary times, and at that time, I said, well, you know, there was some talk about the staff, to some degree, feeling a little overwhelmed, and we didn't want to make cuts to people, so we said, where are some of the areas we can do that? The idea was to reduce it to one meeting. The staff report's written a little different than what I had anticipated. My, my understanding of our earlier talks was that the meetings would potentially start a little bit earlier, so we could do the same amount of business, but do it on one day, and that if any member of the council felt that there needed to be an additional meeting for specific purposes, they could call for that. I don't like the fact that the council doesn't have the authority to do that, the city manager does, and I think that's flip-flopped. I think it should be the other way around. If the council's not comfortable with one person calling for it, I think as many as two, if you need to have the concurrence of two council members to call for a special meeting, because as one of the residents got up and said one of the last meetings, I want to make sure that my views are seen, too, and if I'm not supported by the majority of the council, then my views don't get hurt. I don't want that to be the case. So I'm not opposed to one meeting a month. I'm not opposed to it starting a little bit earlier, because I don't want to be here until the, you know, next day, which we are sometimes even with two meetings. So I'd like to discuss the potential of changing the start time. Also, that it would only take two council members to ask for a, a meeting to be called for, and I think right at this point, and again, I want to hear what the community has to say, and their concerns or their support for this. And I will address the attachment three, which is the council's meeting cost, consultant cost, will-don, et cetera. How often do we have consultants come, Angie? Is it every meeting?
No. Those are the consultants mostly that Dave Hunt and Stephen Mendoza call upon for projects. So you'll see them-
Right.
-you know, lined up. Not, not every meeting.
Okay.
But that's been factored in there.
Sure, sure. I just felt, and no, no disrespect, but I just didn't like the fact, I got the impression that this was being padded a little bit. Department secretary overtime, and it goes on to say how much it is, that's a significant savings, I would imagine, being that we only have a interim city clerk right now, and if we were to have her come, it would be significantly more. So we're very appreciative that Wendy has, you know, stepped up and been willing to do that, but I think that really, again, it's, it's giving you the impression that it's a lot of money when it could actually cost us quite a bit more. of money when it could actually cost us quite a bit more. And the utilities, I have in my notes, really, $3.45, so I'm not saying that I'm not in support of this, but come on, guys, let's not be pushing too hard for it. And I'll go ahead and pass it back to you, Mayor.
Great. Okay. You know, this, again, a different issue that, you know, we should be trying to look for every area of opportunity to help our staff and to help the council be productive. You know, I'd like to hear what the community's thoughts are on this, but again, I think that, you know, going through and being able to, you know, most of us that have been here are till 12, 1 o'clock in the morning, you know, it's just, you know, it's definitely something that you kinda start getting conditioned to, is wanting to get through the business as soon as you can, but be thoughtful, and so we always also kinda justify doing this, is that we just wanna make sure that we're not trying to rush through things. Just a little bit of a correction, you know, Mayor Protempo had made the point, the Orange County Fire Authority, which is a pretty big organization, meets monthly. I think you guys actually meet bimonthly, don't you? Or quarterly?
I think they do.
No, monthly.
For the Fire Authority?
No, it's monthly.
You guys are monthly again?
Yeah.
And the Sand District, I mean, just to give a comparison, is the Sand District, you know, we meet once a month for a board meeting, and it's, the Sand District's 40 times bigger than the city, as far as financially, and so, you know, there's a lot to cover, and we're able to get through that in one meeting. So again, I think that that's, those are my thoughts at this point, but I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to public comment.
J.M. Iveler? Four meetings ago, I believe it was four meetings ago, we were told that we had to rev rules in place, because the only way we could get items on the agenda in an orderly fashion, because the agenda queue was so long, was to have a majority decide to put the item, and Jerry mentioned it slightly. Now we've had two exceptionally short meetings, and I'm hearing we don't have to meet every month, because, oh, our meetings are short, and, you know, we wanna save money. At this point, one of those two is not accurate. Either we've got a large queue, and we need to have two meetings a month to get through it all, or we have no queue, and then we can have one meeting a month, because there's nothing to discuss in our city. That brings me to Jerry's request. If we have had two short meetings now, Jerry has a request, and because we're in the middle of doing our city general plan, it would be really nice to have that request show back up sometime before we finish that process, so that we can have a discussion about rezoning Cotella, which we should've had right after the Compass Blueprint two years ago, or three years ago. There are a number of reasons why should we wait for second readings for a full month. Every other week, we get those second readings pretty quickly, and you guys put stuff on the books pretty fast. Maybe I don't agree sometimes, but at least it gets done. Once a month, it would hurt. Public comments. Once a month, everybody has to show up for the public comment. If somebody has another plan, well, your public comment gets to wait 30 days. That's a little less transparency than I think the city should have. I really like the fact that if I had an appointment in LA tonight, I could come back and speak on this in two weeks. That's a very beneficial feature of meeting twice a month. What about the children? In this case, I'd like to introduce you to our high school students. They come at least once a quarter, en masse. A whole class, or actually, two or three classes, come over a period of three or four weeks. Now you're gonna reduce their access as well to the government, and you're going to pack this room with basically two full high school classes over two months. Not really a really good idea. While I understand that this does reduce public visibility, and we all know how much public visibility is disliked, especially as we go into election season, I don't see the upside outweighing the downside in terms of transparency of this government to the people who it's supposed to be responsible to. For the small price of well under what I believe what was given, it's a small cost to pay for transparency. And I would like to see us maintain the high level of transparency we've had, and not get into a position where people don't have an opportunity to come before this council, because, oh, I missed it on that Monday, I'm gonna wait another four weeks before I can speak my piece. We really need to have levels of transparency there. I'd like to thank you very much for your time, and for the levels of transparency you've provided me tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Hi, Javier again.
What's up, what next?
Yeah.
Pretty good. I'm not real familiar with this item, but I just was thinking, before we make this decision, which there's always pros and cons, I do think that the public comment portion is very important, and maybe there's another way. You could keep that second meeting, reduce your staff, and have that primarily for public comment. That way, you have two weeks to prepare for your next meeting, to get those responses out verbally in a public forum. I don't know if that's a good idea or not, but before you decide to go one way or another, let's make sure that we look at different options that might help, because the public, you know, they do wanna, when they have that fire, they wanna get in and get it done, and then if they don't have that opportunity, I think you lose a lot of steam, and I think that it's very important, and I think we have a lot of public comment in this city, and I just think that that might be another way. And maybe a less formal meeting, where it's the council, maybe the city manager, and just Todd, because I know he likes this so much. You know, I don't know. There might be some other options. I just hate to see you cut it out, and then it, you know, not work the right way, or whatever, so I just want you to look at other options. Thank you.
Thanks, Javier. Anybody else have comments? All right, CNN, I'm gonna go ahead and bring it back to the council. Councilmember Stevens?
You know, I really don't have anything else on it. I'm gonna...
Okay.
It's something where it makes sense financially to the city. I can understand the transparency factor, and that would be a concern, but I don't know how we could ever trim down a meeting without it being formal all the time, you know, so we'll carry on with discussion.
Let me get a clarification. I'm sorry to interrupt you, too. One of the points that Councilmember Mejia brought up had to do with who has the right to invoke into having a meeting, which I think is a very valid point. So before we get too far down the mindset here, and I'll give you an opportunity to go again if you'd like in a moment, but city attorney or city manager, I'd like some clarification on who can invoke a meeting if we had one meeting a month, and what would be the governance or regulatory requirements to start that?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protempo, members of council, under the Brown Act, state of California, either the presiding officer or a majority of the council can call a special meeting or a study session. Your regular meetings are set by either your charter or your code.
Okay. So a single council member wants to have something they can't based on that?
Unless you adopted an ordinance, that would permit that.
Yeah, and so we have the purview to be able to do that if we'd like.
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to kinda throw that in the mix. I'm a proponent of this, and I guess I am steering it a little bit, but Jerry, I'd just like to put that on the table, too. I'm open to that also. Councilmember Stevens, do you have anything else before I move on?
No, no, that would've been the other thing I would've said, too, because good clarification, and I think it still opens it up to where we still can have the coverage for the city.
Great. Councilmember Kuzmato?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to speak after public comment. So I did think about the idea of not having the public comment, where we have it twice a month, and we'll be basically cutting that in half, so I do want that, because I think it is important for us to have input from the community as to what's important to them. The part about calling a special meeting, I do favor what Councilmember Graham Mejia says about not leaving it, not leaving the possibility where a minority viewpoint can be silenced because of the maneuverings or by, I guess, the invoking of city ordinance. I think the one thing I really wanna push on this one is that if we go there, I'm not really comfortable with this, but I'm big on prototyping. Here, we're gonna be coming up in a budgeting session, we'll be having special meetings twice a month as we get closer to June, so I think we're gonna be, the savings we might realize are going to be impacted by the special meetings that we're gonna have to call for the budgeting session, so I think we're gonna have those. I would like to see us try these on a case-by-case basis, let's see how effective it is, see how productive our staff becomes in the process of doing that, and then while we go through the rest of this year, maybe adopt that sometime down the road, and, you know, see if we're really getting what we think we're gonna get out of this, instead of just, as I think one of the members of the public, Mr. Mejia, had said, don't enact it right away, let's see if it does what we think it's going to do. Otherwise, we'll be reversing it and spending more time in staff dollars to, staff time to go and do this. So anyways, I would like to see us prototype, experiment again, let's see if we're gonna get some, realize some productivity and efficiency improvements, which we can measure. I think the curious numbers that you brought up, Angie, I'm curious about that. So you had 31 meetings in last year, is it, and then 30 the year before? I think those are the numbers that you...
Yep. 31 last year, and 30 meetings the year before.
Okay, so that's the denominator. I'd like to know what the numerator, right? How much did that cost us? And then we'll have at least a cost per meeting, and then we can kinda see, are we saving that as we go forward? And then we have some real data to kinda react to and decide on. So that's something to think about. What were the costs, when you look at all of the staff costs and time, and not real to the penny, but just, let's get a ballpark, measure apples and apples, and let's see, and then we'll do the same measurement as we go forward, if we do try the prototype process, and we'll see, are we saving much more than that, and the cost per meeting per month, then at least we're showing savings. Okay, so anyways, back to you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the comment.
Great. Thank you. Mayor Protempo?
Yes, thank you. I certainly respect the comments that have been made by the two gentlemen. Public comment is important. I'm just wondering if we might not, you know, we have our website, we have the ability to have emails sent to any one of the council or to our city manager, and as issues come up during the month, I know when I receive an email from a resident, I immediately either call our city manager, talk about it, and see if there is a resolution, if it's a problem, and get back to the person, either with a phone call or with an email response. So I don't think that by doing this, we would be completely cutting out the public, because we have that ability with technology the way we have it. I have no problem, and I think it's a very good idea for us to have two council members have the ability to request a meeting. That's not an issue for me.
Bless you.
Bless you. And I'm just wondering if, and I understand a council member, Kuzmato's comments about we're coming into the budget session, we will be having special budget meetings, understand that, and that is expected. I think that that is just a given. But I'm wondering if maybe we just try this for six months, do a six-month trial, and see how it goes. If it doesn't go well, we can look at the cost, as you've talked about, and just see how it goes. I think it certainly is worth the effort to give it a six-month trial, and if we're gonna go into a trial portion, I wouldn't wanna muddy it up with changing the stipend for the council members, so leaving that at the 400, and then just try it for six months, and maybe we could even put something on our website, that because of the fact that we are only having one meeting, we could publicize this a little, that if we welcome any public comment during the course of the month, that, you know, if anyone has any questions, I have no problem with answering people's emails.
Councilmember Mejia?
Okay. My husband and I went around and around about this. I do understand that the community would want to have public comment, and I don't want to deny that for them, so I think that's something we need to look at before we move forward. Even if we did a very quick meeting, where we allowed the public to comment, and then that's the extent of the meeting, like we said, there'd be no preparation, there wouldn't need to be the dinners, you know, the significant amount of the cost of the meeting would pretty much go away. So that's just something we can look at. Apologize, but I didn't think about the kids. They do come in force, and I don't know, we'd have to take special, make special arrangements to accommodate them, because as it is, they're packing out the house the majority of the time, so I don't wanna overlook them. And I will bring up, and I'll give you some examples, when I brought forward agenda items prior to you, Angie, it took, it was almost impossible to get agenda items on, and I know you've experienced that in the past, too, and it's very frustrating that you can't represent your constituents and what their desires are or their needs are. There've been, there was, I can't find it in the agenda, I'm sorry, I apologize, but there were five items that we were going to address, and three of them were items that I brought forward, and they've been at least a year, if not two years, coming to fruition, much like the speed hump, which we all pretty much agreed on, you know, from the beginning, that we thought it was a safety issue. And then other council members will bring items forward, and they're addressed in a very expeditious manner. So I do have that one concern, that it's difficult enough for me to get an agenda item on in two meetings, but if we cut it down to one, I'm just looking to represent the people who voted for me to sit up here and to be their voice, and I don't want that to be stifled any more than it already is. And those would, at this point, be my concern.
Okay, great. Okay, so let's try to frame this one up a little bit. So what we've got here is the potential to move forward on an ordinance that feels like might be a temporary ordinance for six months to do an evaluation. You know, just a soundbite on the stipends, and believe me, no one wants to cut costs more than me, but I, you know, I unleashed something. When I took over as mayor, I said one of my things would be to address the stipend. Community didn't think that was a super good idea from the, I got more responses saying, you know, Troy, you guys don't really get a whole lot of money up there anyway, and it takes a lot of time, it really, you know, the types of folks that will actually wanna put in their time, 'cause it is a lot more than a charity board, it's a lot more than a volunteer in the PTA. I mean, it's definitely a lot of work, and, you know, to Warren's point, you know, getting ready for a budget is a huge amount of preparation, especially in your first couple of years. I wouldn't, if I wasn't here, I wouldn't want somebody shortchanging the city, 'cause they didn't feel like it was worth their time, and not, again, that that money is worth a whole lot, so I'm probably holding back on that, only because I, like I said, I started that at the beginning of the year, and I did back off of that. As it pertains to the agenda and the agenda backlog, I would also like to, when we get ready to form some sort of a motion on this ordinance, Jerry, I'd like to put in the weekly memo that we get sent out from the city manager to address J.M.'s point, too, of the backlog must not be real. You know, part of the prerogative, I think, too, is you're, you know, as the mayor, you sit down with the city manager, and she looks through all of the things, and she's trying to balance, and she goes, Troy, can you give me feedback? And what I'd like to do is, in the weekly memo, if it's legal, I think, I'm pretty sure it is, 'cause we're not voting on it, but let's list all the stuff that's out there that's on our backlog. It's, you know, and you know something, Jerry? Again, if you have something out there for over a couple of years, call me, and we'll, I mean, there's no secret there. I mean, it's just a lot of stuff. I don't see having less meetings shorten and, you know, making it harder to get stuff on. I actually, I mean, I think what we're really trying to do is open up the level, it's like, look, two council members wanna add something, wanna have a session, and you have, you get a bunch of calls from folks that wanna have time up here for public comment, they call you and say, hey, make it happen, and if we wanna be really rebellious, let's go to one meeting a month, and then you call every other week and have, I mean, you know...
No, no, that's not my...
No, but I'm being facetious. If we wanted to take it that way, let's afford each other the professional courtesy of those, do it. Let's give this a shot for six months. Let's amend our weekly reporting through the management of the city manager in our memo. These are the open items. I'm gonna ask you guys, it's now, when you see the items, they're not in an ordered list, so don't call me and try and switch them around now. It's like, this is the queue. Maybe we put it in by the date it was dropped in, to give fairness to you, so you could see if you truly are, you know, having an issue there. You know, the only thing I would probably, you know, and it's a compromise for me, is I would like to see this going forward with no period that we would come back and reevaluate it, but I think it's clear that we don't have the support for that. But it sounds like we do have support for a temporary basis, so, you know, I'm hoping that we can make some sort of a motion to be able to get this into the trial period, as I've kind of outlined, and I'm gonna go open up the floor and see if we have any recommendations on a motion.
I have a question, please.
Yes, go ahead.
Concerning the high school children, I have not had a child in high school for many years, so I'm asking a question. I thought that anytime during that semester, you could come to a council meeting. Is that correct? I see them... Concerning the high school children. I have not had a child in high school for many years. So I'm asking a question. I thought that anytime during that semester, you could come to a council meeting. Is that correct? I see them, and so I think what happens, and I'm, it's not a criticism because it is just exactly what we all do. We only do it when we have to. So you do kind of wait till you're through your class a little bit, and then, oh my goodness, we're getting toward the end of the semester, we need to get this in. Is that what kind of happens? No, uh-huh. So you really do have the opportunity anytime during that semester to come to a council meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
So you guys are doing good. Good job.
Yeah.
Because the May-June group is one we worry about, right?
Right, because.
We can go to other city councils.
Okay.
Yeah, but we don't want that. We want.
Yeah, we want you here at ours. Yeah, we love having, we love having you here. And it is good they're here because we've still got till June. You guys are doing really good. But we have the, they do have the opportunity to come at any time, so once a month for the entire semester. So I think that, you know, we would just have to make sure that they know that we're only going to have one meeting a month. You know, I actually am fine with just doing this permanently, but it sounds like there's some feeling that we may, we should do it on a trial basis. So me and I brought up the six months. I will make a motion that we do the recommended action of having one council meeting a month and that being on the third Monday of each month with the ability.
Can we talk about that?
Oh, okay.
I mean, time, so one other part Jerry talked about earlier, and I don't know. First, seems like that's not workable because it's harder for the city. Third is a little bit tougher for some of us that are on other boards.
Oh, well.
And so I'm just, I don't know if anybody else has any preferences. I mean, from, you know.
You mean on the third?
Well, if you do, I mean, we're seeing first and third, but I mean, it could be the second or the fourth.
The second or the fourth, right.
Yeah, the fourth is a pretty light end of the month, but I, again, I'm just maybe trying to consolidate all of my stuff in one period.
My only concern is that I've based vacations and such on the current dates that we meet. So it would be difficult. And I'm, as I, as it is, I'm doing special meetings for the vector control for the budget. And then there's also a meeting before vector that you have to go to that I wasn't aware of when I solicited you all for the position.
Welcome aboard.
Nevertheless, so I'm constantly changing my schedule, and it would be difficult for me to veer from that. But I just want to, I just want to ask, so we're not at all entertaining a quickie meeting for people to, the only reason I ask for the three of you in the middle, and I just don't want this to become an issue, is the election's been brought up. I don't want it to appear for the three of you that this is being done because we're trying to keep down the comments that would come during an election year. I'm trying to look out for you.
But the fix there is if, you know, if it did get divisive, which we don't expect it to. So what we would end up doing is that anybody could just call for the meeting, and you could say, hey, look, I really want to move one of the items off the agenda. I mean, you don't have to lead with the chin here, just said, you know, and you guys get your public comment, and you get to hear one of the issues, and we'll pull it up off of the agenda.
Well, we're just trying to work together, and so I'm trying to be, consider for you the fallout that could come from that, the three of you. And could we throw in there, I'm sorry to get off track, but is there a way that we could write into it that if a council member has an agenda item, that each council member has the right to put one agenda item on? That's not going to happen every agenda, but then that way it guarantees that preference will not be given to the three, two?
Are you talking?
As far as timeline.
In the formation of the agenda?
Yes, I mean, I mean, can we say that each, now that we're going to go to one meeting, and my concern is, is that I'm already not getting to get those items on. Can we say one item per person, per meeting?
How about even go a step further? How about we bring the items of all the items that are on the agenda? The dates aren't just when we can put it on the agenda, it's when staff can actually get these, the report completed. So that's been a little bit of the jockeying, the negotiation was, do I focus on this or that? I have no issue if you want to look at the backlog of the items, and we can have an open public discussion about bringing stuff forward back. Once you get a reset on the queue, then in real time, you can add stuff, you know, as we go.
Yeah. Just looking for, you know, we're working together well now, but we've had, you know.
We'll give it a shot for six months.
A difficult pass. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm trying to ensure that both Warren and I can get items on the agenda, and that it doesn't take two years every time we bring something forward because sometimes, as tonight, the issue we talked about was public safety, and look, it's taken two years. It's gone back to the traffic commission two times. It's like, do we not hold enough sway where if we feel there's an item that needs to be addressed immediately, it can't be done?
Well, I think you do, but.
Okay.
So maybe we're willing to give that a shot for six months and see, and.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I'm, I just want you to be aware of the concerns of the election.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it sounds, Marilyn, I interrupted you. I think, too, I'm just trying to pick the day, I mean, or the Monday of the week is the first, second, third, or fourth.
It'd have to be first or third for me, just because I planned other things around them.
Okay, and the first, I like the first, too, but it seems like staff-wise, that one's a real killer.
Because of the holidays.
Actually, Sandy Levin is the one that recommended the third, not due to her personal schedule or anything, because we all, we all have this agendized. But, and then I looked through the annual calendar today, you know, it's, there are some holidays on Mondays, and so things are moved to Tuesdays. But actually, I think it, you know, it varies all the time. You know, the holidays in February are further down the month. Martin Luther King Day, which is a holiday that we all celebrate in the city, is mid-January. So it, I personally don't think it really matters.
Yeah.
It's up to.
I prefer the first.
Me, too. I actually prefer the first.
See, and I prefer the third, so I'm curious to see where everybody else weighs.
Warren, do you have a?
Either one's fine with me.
Okay, Ken.
You know, actually, I prefer the third. And even though it's a packed week for me on the third week with your Orange County Fire Authority, because it happens both on the second week and the third week, but my life outside city council always creates a mess during that first week of every month, too. And so if anything, it would be more of a convenience for me, you know, personally.
Okay, so we've got a split council with Warren being the swing vote here. So Warren, I'm going to ask you, because I'll go with where the majority wants to go, do you have a strong opinion?
I don't have a strong opinion.
You're not helping on that one?
I don't have a strong opinion, though. Either one's fine with me.
Marilyn, I guess we're the holdouts for the first. What do you think?
Um.
I mean, these are, what they're talking about is valid.
Right.
Real work, you know, trying to consolidate their schedules, and so I have a place for that, too, but it's up to you.
And it is, the third, the third is hard for me. The first one is much easier. But it doesn't, you know.
Okay, we're going to go with.
Right now, we do the first and the third, so, you know.
So if you wouldn't mind, and then the time period, Jerry, you're thinking, what, an hour earlier, six?
Well, yeah, I just thought, I don't want to be here for any of us. You all, I mean, certain ones of you have to be up early and be at work. I'm trying to be cognizant of that. I have a little bit more flexibility going in later. I just don't want us to be here till 12 o'clock because the.
Time is six o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah, but I don't know about anybody else.
Okay, Warren, do you have a view on that one?
Six is fine.
Okay, good.
Six is fine.
All righty, perfect. So can you go ahead and frame your motion up?
Well, let me see here. We'll do the recommended action, but it's actually been changed now, isn't it? With the meeting starting at six o'clock, and let's just leave it at the third, at the third.
Monday.
Monday of the month. The stipend will stay the same, and the provision that the mayor, city manager, or two council members may call a special meeting. Okay?
City attorney.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protempo, members of council, you have a separate code provision for who may call a special meeting. It's not in the ordinance that's before you. It's a separate code provision. We can certainly bring that back with the recommendation that you've made today, but tonight, what's before you is the ordinance that would establish a new meeting date, meeting time, and those various things within that section. It doesn't include that section that addresses the who may call a meeting. And just so the record's clear, currently, the code doesn't provide that the city manager call a meeting, and I think the staff report noted the city manager has the opportunity to request a special meeting. It's only the council, whether it's the presiding officer or majority, has the authority to call a special meeting.
Mayor, can I make a motion then? Can we table this until we can do them both simultaneously? I'm totally in support of it. I just want to make sure that my concerns are covered at the same time.
Well, I was just going to say, leave that out and go ahead and vote on this tonight with the, with the direction that that portion of the code comes back to us at the next meeting so that we can vote on adding two council members and the city manager, because I think we need to have that. But I think we should get this started.
Not going to change your mind. My concern is we vote on this, and then everybody changes their mind for the next vote. That's my concern.
I promise I will not.
Yeah, maybe neither.
Okay, you all heard it.
I.
Okay, I'm supportive. I'll second the motion.
Okay, great, thank you. No more comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, nobody opposes. We'll move on to nine B. Thank you.
Break. Mr. Mayor, members of council, just to clarify, we can, we will include a provision to bring this back within six months, so that you have a chance to revisit it.
Well, yes.
Because what I've heard is there was no consensus to have this permanent. In fact, consensus was, let's try it for six months.
That'll work. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and call a five-minute break, so we'll be back in here in five minutes, and I don't know what time it is, what time.
It's five after.
All righty, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting back into order. We're going to pick up where we left off, which is on item ten, discussion ten A, consideration of investment policy for fiscal years two thousand eleven and twelve, staff report.
Okay, we're going to turn this over to Anita, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the investment policy for fiscal year eleven, twelve, and twelve thirteen. This item was originally scheduled last council meeting. However, it was tabled at that time so that all of our council could be in attendance. And at that time, Councilmember Stevens mentioned that he was working with the OCFA on their policy, their investment policy. So I took the liberty to look at their policy, and as a matter of fact, it is quite similar to our recommended policy. So we have a brief presentation of what the policy is all about. Start off with a little bit of a background. Municipal investment activity is governed by Government Code Section five, three, six, four, six, A two, and that mandates that we look at the policy annually with the involvement of the board. The city's investment policy was reviewed last March. However, the policy has not been modified or updated since back in two thousand three. The current policy limits investments to LEAF and local CDs. The city currently has nine point seven million dollars invested in LEAF that is earning an interest rate of zero point three six percent. The city's idle cash fluctuates from eight point one million to about ten point three million within the course of a year. General fund interest earnings have declined from one hundred and thirty-two thousand back in fiscal year oh eight, oh nine to just twenty thousand in fiscal year ten, eleven. In an effort to increase the interest earnings of the city, staff has reevaluated the city's investment policy, and in doing so, we've developed the recommended policy utilizing several, the expertise of several resources, including the GFOA, Government Finance Officers' Association, the California Debt and Investment Advisory Commission, the California Municipal Treasurers Association, and the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers. A brief overview of the policy. The policy is intended to provide guidelines for the prudent investment of the city's funds in compliance with state and federal laws. The policy will be used by city staff as well as all other third-party providers of investments or investment services. The policy applies to all the city's funds, and the policy recommends a passive management style, which means that investments will be purchased with the intent to be held until they mature. The policy identifies three investment objectives, and they are in order of priority, safety, liquidity, and yield. Safety is, means that the protection of principal is of foremost importance in the investment of public funds. Liquidity, the investment portfolio shall remain liquid enough, fluid enough, to sustain the city's operating cash flows. Yield, within the constraints of safety and liquidity, the highest yields, the highest returns will be sought. Okay, to expand a little bit further, in order to achieve safety, the policy limits the investment types that the city will invest in to only the safest types, which include U.S. Treasury bills, notes, and bonds, federal agency obligations, both of these are backed by the federal government, FDIC insured certificates of deposit, and LEAF. The policy recommends a delivery versus payment method, which means that all investments are verified and only authorized, it verifies that only the authorized securities arrive into the city's account prior to the release of funds. Okay, liquidity. To achieve liquidity, the policy utilizes a laddered approach. So what that means is that a maximum of fifty percent of the city's idle cash can be invested in maturities longer than one year. So fifty percent of our cash flow of our money will be available within the year. And a maximum of thirty percent of the portfolio can have maturities over two years. So what that translates to with our eight point one to ten point three million dollar cash balances, with the eight point one million balance, two point four million may be invested two to five years out. One point six million may be invested in one- to-two-year maturities, and over four million will remain in maturities that are less than one year. Yield. Staff will build a solid network of qualified broker-dealers utilizing the GFOA and CMTA recommended guidelines, which include utilizing a broker questionnaire, requiring proof of certificates and licenses, such as the Financial Industry Regulatory Authority, FINRA certification, as well as state broker-dealer licensing, and require a certification of having read and understood the city's investment policy. Okay, so how do we get there? The first step would be to establish a safekeeping account, and that is, that is part of the safety element, and it serves to protect against fraud or embezzlement. And it is to where securities owned by the city will be held in a safekeeping account by a custodian, a third-party bank trust department. The next step would be to establish a pool of qualified dealers, which, again, we would go, we would utilize a broker questionnaire and require proof of certifications and licenses. Once these two items are established, that will lay the foundation necessary to start an investment portfolio. Then, at that point, staff can start purchasing investments utilizing the delivery versus payment procedure, the DVP method, and build the city's portfolio in accordance to this policy. And reports, quarterly reports would be provided to the city council thereafter. Okay, this is a sample investment report. This is what we might be looking at a few months down. This is what we might be looking at a few months down the road. Currently, the interest rates are quite low, and a bigger print of this is provided in your packet. As you can see here in the top section is the two-to-three-year, two-to-five-year maturities. This section cannot exceed 30% of the city's portfolio. This package represents, or this sample represents, 29.6% with interest rates ranging anywhere from 0.84 to 1.6. The next section is the one-to-two-year maturities. The combined total of this section and the top section, the top two sections cannot exceed 50% of the total portfolio. The represented amount is only at about 48%. And the bottom section is the more liquid part of the portfolio, which is in LEAF or just at our regular Bank of America checking and savings accounts. So to provide a comparison, with the sample investment report, we were projecting a total interest for the year at $49,983, almost 50,000 for the year. With keeping that same amount of money in just LEAF at the current interest rate, that only brings us 28,800 in interest. So the difference is just over $21,000 per year in additional savings by enhancing our portfolio in this manner. And with that, the recommendation is to adopt the investment policy for fiscal year 11, 12, as represented in Attachment 1. And with that, staff believes that this will make it possible for the city to earn a higher rate of return while still maintaining the priorities of safety and liquidity. With that, I'm open to any questions.
Great, thank you. So that was a good staff report and a primer to kind of get us focused on this item. Yeah, just a little bit of history. As we've looked at this, like you said, I won't say every year since 2003, but we, you know, I think prudently, 2008, '09, et cetera, we've always, we looked at this and said, you know, we knew the economy was going to be tough, and we, liquidity was everything. So, you know, we kept it in LEAF. And at those times, I remember, you know, in the staff report, it talks about, you know, on average, almost 200,000 plus per year in interest on the 8 to 9 million dollars. So, you know, at that point, it didn't look like as dramatic or drastic as it does today. LEAF, you know, obviously, the good news about LEAF as a, as an investment is it delays, it doesn't follow directly with the market. So when you have a problem with LEAF, LEAF takes a while to adjust back down. And so we, again, got to ride the benefit a lot longer. When the markets were actually crashing harder, LEAF was staying stable. But now, LEAF is taking longer to come out of the hole. And that's what, you know, just to frame the issue to the community, is that we're looking at this saying, you know, if this was our $9 million personally, would we be managing this and getting the maximum amount of benefit for the city? One last thing before I go into the, you know, into the discussion on it, though, too, is that, you know, there's two components to our fiscal planning for this city. You know, the one is, what can we do structurally to save costs, spend up to the revenue we make, and not spend more than we make? And as Jerry had said earlier, you know, we try to focus on cutting things, not people, and people provide services, and services are important to our community. You know, when you have a $9 million asset, which is almost the entire value of our budget sitting on the side, is, you know, some people can look at that, if you take the liquidity portion out of it and the rest, and you say, hey, look, that could be an opportunity for you to create an engine to actually create the excess surplus, you know? So we have a lot of different things going on coming up into the budget section. We're getting ready fiscally to look to try and make sure structurally we're sound in 2011, '12. We're looking at using a portion of our reserves to potentially invest back into the community through discussions we've had before. At the same time, we're looking at the investment policy saying, you know, it's time to do something. Councilmember Mahia, we really thought it was important to have the entire council here to be able to go through this discussion. You know, I usually wait till the end, but on this one, I do want to frame up a couple of things that I would ask the council to think about, is that, you know, if you look at your sample, at Attachment 3, the sample investment report, and, you know, somebody could be really critical and look at that and say, you know, for $28,000 net increase, you know, are you guys really taking the investment choices seriously? It maintains the posture without going too far down the path in this example, but the, you know, risk and reward is still, you know, we're talking 28,000 of 9 million dollars or 8.1 in the example here. But, you know, so, again, I think one thing that I'm interested in, when I look at this sample of what we could do with our investment policy, what are the yields? You know, I think, you know, somebody had made a comment to me in the community, well, you know, Troy, it's just getting out of LEAF and getting into the ability just to do CDs, that's a big deal. So, you know, that is a big deal, and that provides some rate of return. But, you know, I think, too, the, kind of the criticism or the focus that we had even a year ago when we looked at this is, look, $9 million, do we have the skill set in-house to be able to go and manage that? And so what you've provided is a recommendation to bring in an expert to come in to help us, you know? In a city that's got history of kind of conspiracy theory, you also want to make sure that, are we turning this over? So the safekeeping account was kind of a middle ground, if you're getting into the details of it, of kind of how we're trying to provide full transparency and security and what we're trying to do prudently. And that provides kind of a shield around whatever the investment strategy will end up being. So, again, I just want to make sure everybody's clear in the community, you know, this council is focused three or four levels deep on this. It's something that's very important to us. The rate of return is, you know, you look at it, you go, God, you guys are just not good financial managers. This is exactly the posture this city should have had through the toughest economic times that we've seen in our lifetime through our city. But now, as we're popping out, this is exactly the time we should be looking at a more aggressive stance. I hope tonight that we can push this as far as we can to open up the opportunities without compromising the risk. And I know, Anita, you're prepared to have that discussion past the instruments that you've provided as recommendations here. And I say instruments very specifically, looking at extended types of maturity levels to be able to get bigger reward. A lot of people in the financial markets now think, you know, you don't want to get tied in for longer periods of time, even though the yields look better, because it is going the other way. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open it up. Councilmember, he is a professional courtesy. I will start with you or go wherever, but, you know, you had called me and asked to wait, and I just want to make sure that, find out where you're at on this.
Well, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate the council waiting. I just have a couple of things. I'm glad that you mentioned that we are using the broker going forward, because that's the best way for us to be successful in our endeavor to move from LEAF and into something else. I would like to say that LEAF down the line will rebound, and at that time, I'd like to make sure that we readdress this. Should LEAF become the best way for us to go, it is one of the safest, and I like the idea that we have that protection. On page four, under liquidity, did we come up with the amounts that we have set aside here, the 2.4 million over two-to-five years, 1.6 over two, one-to-two years, and then the money that goes into LEAF? Is that all done on percentages that are allowable? Or how did we come up with, how did we come up with these numbers?
It was done based on the minimum amount that we have within the cash flow of a year.
Okay, so it's the minimum amount?
Mm-hmm. It was a conservative approach, basically.
Right, okay. And I like to hear that, because this isn't our money. This is the people's money. On, on page five, you talked about getting quarterly reports. Should there be an instance where the investments are doing poorly? I would like to ask that we can address those sooner rather than later. I know that they'll be in whatever investment policies we go with for a certain duration of time, but if there's some kind of a negative effect, I'd like to know sooner than waiting to the quarterly so that we know what's going on. Just, it's good to be in charge of our money and know how it's doing. You know what, Mayor? Go ahead, and if you can, you can.
Got a problem. Councilmember Kuzemata?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as I listen to this, Anita, thank you very much for the report. The things that stick out in my mind on that, on basically the objective, and maybe you can help me understand it, but checks and balances, and then risks. So, the process, so this, the safekeeping account, that's where all the money goes in, and then it gets, I'll say, invested by the pool of qualified brokers. Is that how I understand it?
No. Basically, we would establish a pool of brokers that we can deal with.
Okay.
So have a list of brokers. It wouldn't just be one broker. And at any time that we're ready to make an investment, we would call up and say, hey, what do you have available?
Okay.
Each of the brokers would respond, and then from there, we would choose our best options at that point.
And then the "we" that chooses, that's the question. I have the checks and the balances that could, kind of simply put, you're making a bet, right? You're making a bet with somebody's money. And how do we know that's the best, safest bet? Because there's the risk, right? That, you know, like Orange County had experienced a bankruptcy, and the gentleman doing it was consulting fortune tellers and God knows what else, right? Looking at tea leaves and, that's the part I'm just kind of, where's the check and balance that's going to be? How do we know that, you know, again, that the risk that we're going to invest in? And I look at these things, and I'm not concerned about the instruments, but, again, it's, where are those choices? Because we can start going down the wrong path and then try to, I'll say, without checks and balances, maybe start to, you know, chase after something and pour money after it in hopes it kind of rebounds, and pretty soon, we have a meltdown, right?
Right. Well, the first step is the instruments. And all the instruments that are allowed within the policy are only the ones that are backed by either the federal government or FDIC insurance or LEAF. Those are the only options that are available within the policy.
But like some of them, there'll be an upper limit of how much they'll guarantee, right?
I'm sorry?
The ceiling at which they'll guarantee the investment, right? Or no, it's unlimited if we go.
No, FDIC insurance is up to 250,000, and that's why all the investments
Yep, yep, okay.
Are below that, so even the interest that they accrue would be covered.
Yep, okay.
Then, any of the federal agencies or treasury notes would be backed by the federal government, and that is not to any limit. And then the other option outside of that is LEAF.
Okay, then, so if, as Councilmember Graham Mahia says, not to wait until a quarter passes and something, you know, the alarm should be sounding. So what would be our circuit breakers that would trip, that would cause us to, you know, cause a reportable action from the finance department to come back to us?
Well, these are not the type of investments that would drop in value. Whatever you buy them at, that's where they stay.
But, again, the objective here is to make money, right?
Right.
Right, so if we've got a projection that we're going to fall short, at what point do we find that out? After it's too late to make some adjustments or, you know, you know what I'm saying? If we wait for a quarter and we've missed an opportunity for us to at least hear about it, what are those, the trip points, the trigger points that would cause us to get a report back instead of waiting until the end of the quarter? So just think about that. I mean, and we can, I can talk with you offline, but as I was thinking about it, that if we expect, projected at some interest payment, and all of a sudden, the month goes by and you realize you're not going to get there, you realize it's just not going to happen. So do we want to, you know, take a step back and say, maybe we should put the money somewhere else while we have a chance? You know what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, but the thing is, with these particular investments, instruments, that is basically covered from happening, that is prevented from happening just based on the investments that are
So, but if we have a policy that has a trigger point that will result in an automatic report, right, let's not wait, and it never gets enacted, that's great, right? It never gets invoked, because everything works the way it should. But I think it's one of those safeguards that we ought to think about, right? If we're going to be playing around with the money like this. And I shouldn't say playing around, investing the money, trying to do it prudently and wisely. I think that's just kind of my thoughts. And the other part would be risk. It's, you know, if you go back a page, when I look at this, you know, I could draw a quadrant on there, and then below each one is, what's the relative risk to LEAF? Is it, you know, how much, how much more risk do we have? And that's just a question, right, to think about? And I'd be curious as to know.
I'd venture to say that the others are less risky than LEAF.
Good, good. So they should, okay, good. Thank you. That answered my question. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
First of all, I wanted to thank you for reaching out to the other agencies, including the Orange County Fire Authority. And, you know, this is sort of a trend that everybody's going through right now, and it's just, you know, LEAF, great organization, like the mayor said, we were able to ride fairly well on it for a long time. But now, when you're dealing with 0.36% interest, you just, you have to step back and wonder, I mean, is it really worth it? And knowing that other interest rates are still dropping, I mean, anything that we would have a chance to increase the interest rate on, I would, I would be in favor on it, but it goes back to the prudent investment, too. And as Councilmember Kuzimoto said, I'm interested in hearing some sort of a trigger point by percent, possibly, if there's any movement in the wrong direction on any further investments that we do through brokers. The FDIC, correct, you know, if we're dealing with the banks, they're limited to 250,000. Federal treasury notes, there's no limit on.
Right.
And also, with LEAF, there was no limit on. I mean, we could have had our money within a 24-hour period at any one time. But, again, how often are we going to need to write a check for that amount of money? You know, and that's what we've got to look at. And I have to agree, you know, just leaving 50% or 4 million approximately of the monies in LEAF and being creative, and like other agencies, going out, trying to find other possible investments to be able to gain more money. Again, for a small city like this, a little bit of money can go a long way. I have to agree with, too. So, you know, I enjoyed seeing this report, seeing how far you reached out to be able to do it. And now it's just, I think, just taking it to the next level right now for me. So, thank you.
Great. Mayor Pro Timpo?
Thank you. A very, very good report. I just will put a little bit of levity here. The first time I was elected to the city council, two days after the election, Orange County went bankrupt. And that was what I was greeted with at my first council meeting. And I remember very, you know, of course, the whole county was turned upside down, and I remember the word derivatives. Now, that has stuck in my mind, and this was a risky thing, and that's what the county was involved with. So we don't have anything like that here, and every time since I've been on the council that any investment policies have come up, I've looked for the word derivatives, because I want to make sure it's not there. Let me just have this clear in my mind. When you're talking here about certificates of deposit, if we were to, to purchase one as it's right here with any of these agencies where it says certificates of deposit, am I correct that we would do it for a specific amount of money?
Yes.
For a specific amount of time?
Yes.
And at the end of that time, you are guaranteed a specific amount of interest?
That's correct.
So that's not going to fluctuate?
Exactly.
So if it's for a two-year period, we know that at the end of that two years, we're going to get that much interest. And there's not really a risk there.
Exactly.
Correct?
Correct.
All right. So I'm not quite sure where there would be a trigger point or whatever, because there, you've got it for a specific amount of time, you know the amount of interest, you've agreed to that when you purchased it, and at the end of that, you, that's what you're going to have. I certainly think that, you know, more reporting, more, as often as possible, is the best thing, because you don't want to get in a situation. But with CDs, you're not going to have a situation of where they would fluctuate. The only thing that would fluctuate, am I correct? You tell me, which, what would fluctuate?
The only one that would fluctuate is LEAF.
Is LEAF. Exactly, exactly. So that is, and we get a regular monthly report on that, correct?
It's quarterly, actually.
Well, but could we get a monthly report?
We get a monthly report, but interest is given out quarterly.
The interest is given out quarterly, okay. So the only thing I would say here, you know, I look at this as, this is not my money. This is our community's money. And I am very, my husband and I are very frugal with our own money, but I am death on this. You know, this is not mine. And I don't want to vote on anything that would put this city at any risk at all. And I think we can, we've seen where some of the other communities have had problems with money, you know, not have, having to cut people, having to cut everything, and we've really been, because we've been very frugal, because we've been on top of this, we've been able to be a little bit better off. Not to say that we haven't made the cuts that we've had to make, but, you know, we but, you know, we agreed a long time ago that we wanted to do, you know, not people, but wherever we could cut to keep all the people that we have on staff. The only thing that I would say, and I understand this is a sample investment report. And I think the policies that you've laid out here are good. And the only thing I would say is that maybe when we get into the actual investing, maybe we don't invest quite as much. So maybe we keep $5 million in LEAF or, you know, whatever. But that's, you know, that's up to our finance department. And if we're going to go out and hire and ask people, you know, you're talking about the
Broker.
The brokers, you know, they'll be able to help with that.
Exactly.
So I really don't have any other questions. I think that, I thank you for the report. I think we've come a long way. And I do think that it is time for us to just move out a little bit and kind of get into something that can help our community in the long run.
Great. Thank you. So a couple of points to kind of close this off. Within the sanitation district, we have an investment policy that we try to follow the same type of process. We have almost $500,000 under, or $500 million under investment. So, you know, and it does go down into, I won't say derivatives, but there's a lot of different financial investments and instruments that are utilized. Something that I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that we're talking about is kind of a free-for-all, open brokerage call. You know, at the sanitation district, we use PIMCO as one of the money brokers out there. And, you know, I quite honestly, I don't know if $10 million would be enough to, that's something they would actually take on. But, you know, I, you know, think about it if it's your own money. You know, if I have, you know, whatever, a bunch of money out there, I'm not going to have a bunch of different brokers. I have one guy that helps me get squared away. And I don't put it out for bid because these are points in time. It's, you know, especially with the strategy we're talking about here, we're not talking about derivatives, not talking about zero coupon bonds, we're not talking about T-bills. We're talking about CDs. And, you know, when we go past that point, if we're going to put money kind of under management, you know, I'd be interested to talk to having a money broker that would actually come in and manage this as a $10 million portfolio through that process, to be able to just open up to that. They will bring options to us that will test our degrees of risk aversion and whether, how comfortable we are. At a starting point, giving you the authority to move from LEAF to a CD, I think is an easy one. The move from LEAF to having money management and using safekeeping accounts and all of that really starts talking more about structurally, how are we going to manage a $10 million portfolio? And it's more sophisticated than just CDs. You know, I also think that when you talk about doing investments for this money for the city, I think you also got to take into advantage or into a consideration the entire portfolio of risk management, too. Because in the sand district, we keep $500 million under, you know, management because we self-insure a lot of the facilities out there, even though there's $6 billion worth of assets. So, you know, again, statistically, not very, you know, perfect coverage, but it helps bring total insurance coverages down. So when we have our JPA that we're a part of for insurance, we pay about $450,000 a year to that insurance broker. And I think that I would, you know, first of all, I'm not going to stonewall this year. I'm going to support this, and we're going to make, able to take steps. But I think that, you know, when we're talking about money management, we need to open this up a little bit bigger than, you know, just a cattle call for brokers. You know, I'd like to be going to more middle-tier brokerage house that actually focuses on full service, that they would be able to look at this as an investment of a certain amount of money. And through that, only give them the authorization to utilize through certificates of deposit or the, you know, the risk strategy that you're putting in place here, because we got to walk before we run. But then I think be open to the quarterly and annual reports. You know, at the sand district, we get an annual briefing, and we get quarterly reports and an admin committee where we get to actually go through. But once a year, we actually sit down, PIMCO comes through, and we go through, you know, that we really have two risk profiles, and one's more liquid and one's more longer term. And we take a look at that, and we see kind of where it ends up. You know, obviously not as sophisticated here, but kind of similar, right? We want LEAF to be one part, and we're ready to go through something that, you know, we're going to take a look at on the other side. Words I don't like to hear in investment portfolios, you know, reactionary, trigger. I mean, these are not that type of things. If we were managing stocks and stuff, I'd say absolutely. So again, our risk profile, I'm interested in longer term, whether we do it now. I'll support whatever, you know, I think the direction we're heading here, which is to move towards the next tier, which is CDs, potentially buy money management or, you know, some sort of a broker. I would push and ask you guys, and I know because it is a service that we'll get, that you'll have to bring the bid back to us on the services that would be provided. So I know we're not asking you to make a decision wholly by yourself. That would come back to us. But I would ask you to look bigger than just a bunch of small guys that have a Series 7 license and they're ready to rock and roll. Let's talk to somebody that actually manages portfolios for SMB or small, medium-sized businesses or municipalities over $10 million and see what we can come up with. I'd like to look at the risk assurances, what we got for insurance of the city. You know, there could be an opportunity to look into investments that are actually longer-term insurance-type instruments that we can meet the liquidity and the risk factor, but, or at least the risk factor, and maybe limits the liquidity portion, but we offset it by what we would spend in our insurances if we have any flexibility there. So I think that, you know, those are some of the things that I'm thinking about through this. You know, and, you know, not to scare you, Marilyn, but actually in the staff report, you know, under state code law, you know, cities have the most strenuous, you know, regulations to be able to see what we want to do. But cities, I mean, if you go in, it's in the staff report in one of the sections. It does talk about, I mean, there is page five. If you see third or fourth paragraph down there, state and federal laws notwithstanding, it gives a list of instruments that are more sophisticated than our city should be looking at, but authorized. And so.
Strictly prohibited.
Yeah, they're prohibited, but those are the types of instruments that the county started focusing on. And, you know, so the laws have changed. So I don't think there's a lot of degrees of risk here.
Right.
But one thing I would like to be able to do is just, again, look at more of a full service. Because, you know, if we are going to put the money in harm's way at all, and which I don't think CDs do.
No.
But the rate of return right now at 1% or .75 on $9 million, you know, we really, you know, we should be trying to get much greater than that. So again, that's where I'm at. I would be supportive of the investment policy. And I'd also be open that when you go through the broker process, I hope you guys would bring it back. With that, anybody have any other comments? This is to adopt the fiscal policy. Is there any modifications or anything specifically that you'd want to focus on here?
I have one thing.
Sure.
I know this is just a sample, Anita, but under certificates of deposit on the last page of your presentation, you have different banks. Okay. Are these just sample banks, or are these banks that we're using currently?
Currently, we're only using Bank of America.
Just Bank of America.
These are samples of what's actually available out there.
Okay. My, and I think Marilyn said this, too. I would like to see us focus this money at banks in town, should they provide the same thing. I would like to see this money spread out through, we have just a few banks in town. I'd like to see that money stay here because Southland Credit Union, just as an example, has been a great community partner.
It's on there.
No, that's what I'm saying. It's on there. So I think that's great. But I would like to focus more on the banks here in town. And I'd like this to come back to us to review that at the very least before we move forward.
Okay.
I mean, beyond this, you know, for who, I'm good with this, but.
Let me do this, too, Jerry. I want to open up to public comment. I had a discussion with Richard Murphy before. Rich, do you have any other, or anybody in the audience? Do you have any comments that you'd like to address the council, please?
Yes, please. By no, it's by no means an area of expertise by me, but I take strong exception to the comment that treasury bills and notes do not change in value. They definitely change in value. And we may be able to hold them for five years. But I believe that the council members on the end who are asking for a trigger point are entirely correct. Treasury bills fluctuate with interest rates. We were at record-low interest rates. Treasury bills have nowhere to go but down, in my opinion. To say that they do not fluctuate in value, which is, I believe is flat wrong. Feel free to correct me, but a five-year treasury note is an interest-sensitive instrument. Okay? I also believe the city, some of the report, has a much higher opinion of brokers than I'm willing to give them. Calling brokers and asking what they have available, in my mind, is the equivalent of saying, what garbage are you willing to sell me today? And I'm sorry for the harshness of the opinion, but brokers looking out for the city on a one-by-one basis, I don't see. I'm glad to hear, Mr. Mayor, that you brought up bringing in a professional. Because $10 million asset, and it's funny, like you said, PIMCO wouldn't even, probably won't even touch us for a $10 million asset. It's not that much money. But to this city, it's all the money in the world. Back on the treasury bills, hopefully, we never get to the point where the, we need our entire pool of money at any one time. But if we do, that means there is some calamity. And I can't guarantee it, but I will tell you it will come true. The moment that these investments are at their lowest possible value will be the day we have the earthquake that we need this money for. It's almost a given. The, in the first page of the staff report, we talk about, over the past few years, the city's earnings have declined from $132,000 to $20,000 in the last year, with continued declines projected in the current fiscal year. There may be some semantics in play here, because I noticed on the first screen, they talked about the general fund. So this may be a different thing than your screen says. Because this projects to a 2/10 of 1% return, where, is it LEAF?
LEAF.
LEAF. LEAF is giving us .35%. So maybe we're comparing apples and oranges here?
This is the general fund only.
Okay.
And so the city has other funds, so the rest of the money's going to the other funds.
It doesn't say that here, but it said it on the thought, where I started thinking, maybe I walked into something there. But just in general, I think the idea of having a relationship with somebody who's actually looking out for our interest is the way to go, but we have to realize that the interest rates right now are scary low. They're great if you're a borrower, but if you're an investor, I'm not sure this is the time to reach free yield. Doesn't mean that we don't go to CDs and at least double our yields. I mean, but the trouble is now is the market is not providing yield. As every senior citizen on a fixed income knows right now, you know, times are tough to be an investor. But with interest rates where they are now, they have nowhere to go but up, which is going to be negative for the bond market. Don't have to tell you that, but thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay.
Sure, I can ask one?
Sure.
The 20% that we set aside, I think it was in our first year, that's going to remain liquid. So in case there is a catastrophe or disaster, that's going to be accessible for us to take care of the community, right? That's the LEAF part of it.
Well, so what we have is restricted and unrestricted surplus. So I think, Anita, it's probably important that you talk a little bit about, because this money, there's a timing issue of, you know, the money we have and when the money's available and when we have to spend it. And so this is kind of like a perpetual float. And so the question that Councilmember Mahia asked about is, you know, we have a provision in our reserve policy that says we have a restriction that, you know, non-negotiable, we can't utilize that money. And the other percentage says it's open, whether we want to invest in the community or invest. Talk a little bit about that.
Sure. The sample policy was utilizing the low end of our cash flow. So it was utilizing the 8.1 million dollar end, whereas currently, we're at about 10.3. So that difference would always remain in LEAF. That would always be the fluid end of it.
Okay. Does that help, Jerry?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any, go ahead.
But we could always stipulate that we want to have more in LEAF as a buffer.
Exactly. This was only a sample.
Right.
We can say that we only want to invest $2 million. Maybe we only want to invest $1 million, you know, at the council's discretion.
Yeah. So I think that, you know, what we're looking for, for approval, is that we're looking to really not go as far as the treasury bill example that maybe Richard had talked about. Because I wouldn't be supportive of that either at this point. But I am supportive of moving up the chain into CDs. And this policy gives you the authority to do that. You also hear a pretty strong message. I don't think you're getting authorization to go past the CDs. You know, and I think you may be hearing the need for professional management if we're going to manage it at a bigger chunk, because we could always reach up and try and get more. I do feel strongly about the risk, you know, profile for the city, including the insurances that we buy to protect against, you know. Sometimes we buy insurance to protect against something we could self-insure because we do have a lot of cash. And, you know, we're, think about this. We're paying $450,000 a year for insurance. That's sure a lot more than a return of $23,000, yeah, if we were self-insured. But obviously, the risk game is that you have much more than $10 million potentially of assets that, and you don't want to be wiped out under the one earthquake clause. But it's all, it's weighing off all sides of the provision. So I'm supportive of this policy. I think that this is the right step to move forward. I think that it's, the way it's designed, it requires the, you know, the finance department to come back to us. And, you know, with the triggers and stuff, I guess, Councilmember Kuzimoto, if there's very specific triggers in here, I think that if you go under the reporting section in here, if you want to explore that further, something that makes you more comfortable, I'm completely open to that, too. I don't know, Warren, do you have anything specifically in the reporting section you'd like to amend in the policy?
No, I, not at this time. I just wanted to make sure there's a mechanism to automatically feed back to the council. That's all.
Okay. Can I ask for a motion on this?
Mayor, I'm happy to make the motion, but, because this is very similar to the same, it's been brought forward a couple of times, very, very, almost identical to this. So with the opportunity for us to make sure that the banks in town get the investment, should we go that way?
Okay.
And so I'll make the motion to go.
Yeah, no, no, no. So where would we amend this policy specifically, or this ordinance, that of how we're going to go through and be able to have a bi-local type policy on it?
I think it's already built into it, isn't it? We had discussed that earlier and.
Well, the sample policy does utilize three of the local banks as a sample. It has Southland Credit Union, it has US Bank, and Chase, which are all local providers.
But the challenge was, I think, a lot of us up here were using the sample as like it was a real example, and it was just a sample. So I'm talking specifically in the ordinance or the policy, I should say. Where would we put a local clause specifically on investing, you know, trying to go as a preference first to local banks?
We can add that in the permitted investments.
Sorry, needed to do that to you. I should have called you today.
Okay.
And let you know. I just think, you know, we're talking about keeping everything local. I think this is, you know, could be huge for these banks locally, and they could use our help.
So the motion will be, Jerry, what you've made is that local provision, and will allow staff to be able to put it in specifically. Mayor Protempo, you had a comment?
Yes. Excuse me. If we're talking about, I guess I'm getting a little confused here. If we're talking about a broker, and I agree that I think we should have maybe look into several different brokers and then decide on one, I agree with that, with that thought process. But if we have a broker, then how does this, using our local banks, interact with that?
They would have to follow our policy.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if our policy says that.
So whatever broker we would decide to approve, would then look to the different instruments that are available at the banks that are in our local community and give us their best recommendation.
Also, with banks that are here locally, staff can actually reach out to those banks and make those arrangements directly without utilizing a broker service.
Right. And the thing about the broker is, I mean, before we pass over need. And, and the thing about the broker is, I mean, before we pass over Neenan, know what she's qualified to do, I think that she can play a larger role in it than what we're allowing her to. And like you said, Troy, ten million dollars is, I mean, to us it's a lot, but out there in the real world, because that's one of the things I looked into when this came before us last time. I just want to make sure that the cost of what we would pay the broker is not going to be so absorbent that it's not worth it for us. I mean, especially since, like you said, the things that we're going into are very safe. And Richard, I appreciate the input you had also.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's a very good point. I, I mean, let's talk about this just for one minute. Brokerage fees could be twice what our return is right now. So, you know, I guess where I was thinking we were going was kind of step one, approve the policy and implement it prudently. And implement it prudently meant step one might be go down and get a CD. I wouldn't want us to go have a brokerage fee if we, you know, tomorrow could put money locally in a bank and get two or three times the return we're getting in LEAF, as long as it met the policy guidelines. Step two, get a broker and look at the entire portfolio, you know, if we start going through it. We would get proposals. We'd get to see the different broker fees, what they think they could do with this based on the policy. And they would, it would be a regression line. They would see what would be the maximum return that they could provide. And then we could weigh off a broker fee. That's why I was saying, at that point, it would come back to us and we would be able to make a policy decision. But in the short term, she would have authority based on the policy to be able to move money out of LEAF and into something a little, I, I won't even call it aggressive, just.
Well.
More yield.
Better investment, more yield. Yeah, thank you.
And I, I think I had already, you know, commented that one of the agencies here, right next door, the sewer district, they, that's exactly what they did. They had money in LEAF and one of the local banks offered to, you know, so they just put a reasonable amount in there just to help with this. And so we're just doing slow steps here. I'm good with slow steps here.
Anita, are you clear then? Have we, have we said anything that contradicts what your execution plan is?
No, I'm clear.
Okay. Okay, so Jerry had made a motion on this. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. First, say any other comments?
Can we, can we have that read back? Because I want to know exactly what I'm voting on.
Absolutely. City Clerk, do you want to provide that or do you want us to give it a shot? Bless you.
Bless you.
Do you want, do you want me to?
Sorry.
So I have that you guys are approving the investment policy as written with a provision to go locally first.
Okay.
Yeah. And it has the built-in mechanisms that would bring it back through the rest of it. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, nobody opposed. So I think that is it. So I'm going to go ahead with council-directed comments. And Marilyn, I'm going to start with you.
Okay, and I'm going to be very quick. I left the community the day after our last meeting and just got back yesterday. So I've attended nothing in the community and I really don't have anything to report.
That's the shortest ever. Thank you, Marilyn.
The shortest one I've ever done, isn't it?
Mayor, would you call on Marilyn first?
Yeah, I thought that would give me time to get organized. Councilmember Mahia?
Yes, I just want to report out that I attended a vector control budget meeting and it was very informative. And it's, it's a very new commission for me, so I will continue to be learning and look forward to that. Other than that, I'm looking forward to closed session so we can get.
I, I just want to give you one comment. So Mayor Bailey, Cypress, I talk to him fairly frequently. Says that you are a great contributor on that board, so I just wanted to pass.
Oh, I think he's very kind.
So.
Thank you.
Anyway, Councilmember Stevens?
I attended the Orange County Fire Authority meeting, which pretty much paralleled this exact meeting right here. And still going over the best investments or the possibility of different investments. And our finance manager, she sort of laid it out with the way that pretty much all of the different authorities and meetings within some of the cities are going right now. Just looking for something better to be able to come out with a better interest rate and still maintain the safety and liquidity that goes along with it. I also wanted to mention that we did have a fire over on Green Street last week, two weeks ago. And it was right three houses or three apartment buildings down from the fire station, our fire station number two. And it gave me a chance to speak to that at the Fire Authority with some of the, the other chiefs. And I don't know if anyone really knows how difficult it is to respond to a fire next door. Whenever you have the large company, accompaniment that it takes to be able to do it. But in this case, our crew over at Fire Station Number Two, right on Green Street, was able to respond quickly to what could have been a very potential and serious fire. And if you went by there at all, you'll see some big pine trees out in front and quite a few other things. They actually did have to mobilize completely. But we also had assistance from Station Seventeen and Forty-eight, too, that came in and started to drop hose lines. And as soon as they told that to me, I, I had to stop for a minute and go, well, why did Cypress drop hose lines whenever we're already in there fighting the fire? And then I learned something that was really, I guess startling to me. In that entire block between Cherry and Los Albeles Boulevard, there's only two hydrants, one at each end of the street. And then I started looking around some of the other areas within Carrier Row and not only Carrier Row, Old Town, everywhere else. And I, I, it concerns me that we have not addressed an issue like this of having the hydrants, at least one more in the middle of the block or when you have to string hoses and some of the trucks don't even carry enough hose to string from one end of the block all the way down to where a potential fire might be halfway down a block. So I don't know what happened many years ago, whenever it came down to developers and so on, putting in fire hydrants. And I don't know whose responsibility that is. Is it Golden State Water? Do they own some or have some ownership in this issue? Or is it the developers that maybe whenever they're ready to develop a piece of property that we should readdress issues like this? But it is an issue. It concerns me and I think it should concern anyone in our city. Drive around, look for the blue dots in the middle of the street. Those aren't speed bumps. That little dot tells you where, in fact, it tells the firemen where there's a fire hydrant. And so if you're driving at nighttime and you see that little blue reflector in the middle of your street, that's where you have a fire hydrant. Well, I was concerned. I just don't see a lot of them in there. And I don't know, Stephen, I don't want to put you on the spot on this because I know you don't have the answers. But if it's, if it's okay with the council, I'd, I'd like to see a report come back on this and find out if there's a solution to it, what might be the, the best way, maybe not immediately, but going forward. As the, the years keep going and we keep expanding in the city, how do we get more fire hydrants into densely populated areas like, like Apartment Row? I mean, it's just, it concerned me when I heard that they actually had to loop a hose line and drag it all the way down the street from the corner. So that's my request, that something would come back to us if we can do that, get a little more in-depth on it. And just come up with a, a nice study. Again, it's something that's going to have to go forward, probably for the next council and the next one after that, maybe for the next twenty years to be able to get it up to speed. But it's something that has to be addressed. That's all I have.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kusamoto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had a quiet week and really, I've talked with the city manager, some potential projects I don't want to really go into right now, but I, just back to you, nothing really to report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Mahia?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. I guess that just leaves me.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm good.
So a couple items, the Orange County Sand Station District, the board meetings. You know, we did a very interesting evaluation. You know, we have an attorney that we've had, that law firm with the Sand District that predates me for many years. That, matter of fact, the partner that the firm is named after is, was the original guy and has since passed, so his firm's still there. We had an issue about three, four months ago, Brown Act issue. We went in, talked about a personnel item, came out and actually voted on the thing in closed session, should have waited. It prompted a bunch of the board members to look at, hey, you know, we need to do a, a, a city attorney evaluation or an attorney evaluation. And I was very proud of the way that the, the board went through that because, you know, it's an attorney for a huge organization. It's an outside firm. And it, we rated them, like we would a city attorney or city manager. We looked at kind of five different criteria. First numerically, one through five, getting them, you know, and then we started with kind of an ad hoc group to do the first evaluation of the steering committee. And then we kind of rolled out to the extended group and with the, with the recommendation. And, you know, it was very helpful and it identified things that were, were helpful, not so much strategic shortfalls, but almost administrative type issues of using the right level of support. You know, some of the responsiveness items that we talked about really were easy fixes within being able just to have administrative help where, where needed. So I just thought I would share that. And a lot of us that left that, especially much bigger cities, took that process back to their city and actually started an evaluation because almost every city, except maybe like St. Anna has in-house counsel now, Newport Beach. But a lot of them use outsourced, outsourced services. So it's just something that I thought was very interesting. Note to the community, Golden State Water. You know, there's a lot of stuff still in the news on that, you know, we, we're looking at a twenty-four percent rate increase on water. You know, just as a reminder of the city, that this council has taken a very proactive approach on staying involved legislatively in what's going on with Golden State Water. They are the water provider here, Cypress, Stanton, a couple other cities. And if you remember, again, just to kind of keep everybody informed, they were making major infrastructure improvements up in Big Bear and the High Desert. And those improvements had to be amortized across their entire system. And that meant that we were getting the brunt of pretty significant rate increases. When they started pushing into that a little bit more, we have an activist council member who's a friend of the city, Dave Schauer, who's on Stanton City Council. He kind of got that in his craw and started pushing forward and started getting more financial evaluation of Golden State Water and found significant executive bonuses tied to ma- making a minimum amount of money for their firm, Golden State Water. And executives making pretty high bonuses. And so he started pushing it. We made a conscious decision that the community has followed. I mean, this is something we've all talked about up here because we've all been like, hey, what are we going to do? We, we, we chose to not pursue this legally and become what is considered an intervener status where we would not basically, you know, get our city attorney or the, or help pay for the legal defense of the cities getting involved with Golden State Water as we petition against the Public Utilities Commission or the PUC that, that governs rate changes. And that, the cities that did decide to be intervenors are the ones that you're reading about right now in the newspaper. Because, you know, some of them have put up to fifty thousand dollars of city money into this fund to help fund this. And we, like I said, we made a conscious decision to be supportive. Now, the one area of support that we may be able to still provide is a letter or a resolution supporting their efforts. Senator Bob Hoff, who's the Senate Minority Leader, Orange County, actually got behind the legislature that we're trying to push. And really that legislature is more around really financial transparency for stuff that we really had to push really hard to kind of uncover. I think if you talk to some folks in that group, a big push of that, because, you know, they, they look at the twenty-five percent rate increase and they say, you know, this is a private company, you know, we should take our water distribution back. And not, that's not our opinion on Los Almeidas. They have been a great partner to us. They were here tonight. We recognize them as being a supporter and race in the base. So, you know, we have tried to, you know, be partners and, and work with everybody. But I think in the bigger picture is our residents also see a twenty-five percent rate increase. And so a probably non-threatening thing that I would put forward and, and not too aggressive, but, 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 but a stern message. I think that we ought to consider putting out and, you know, signed by us, a note or a resolution on the next agenda. We do have legislative capability that we could do that. It does not have to come back to the city council. And this isn't something we're going to make a decision on before the attorney stops me. But I, but, but I do think, you know, legislatively, as our platform, that is something that we should look into as a, as a voice of support. We're not bringing money to the table. We, we really, quite frankly, can't afford another fight like that. But, but I think it's the least potential we could do. And I, I, again, I don't know in the interim, city attorney or city manager, if that's something that we can, can even think about doing before a council member or do we have to bring it back at this point?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, if you want to adopt a resolution and have all five signatures of the council, you're going to want to bring it back, whether a short or long agenda, staff report. If staff has administrative authority to do these kinds of letters as a matter of practice over time, they could do that now. And I haven't heard any objection. You can't make a decision tonight, obviously. It's not on the agenda.
You just have to make a sign.
But if it's something that you've had discussions about in the past, staff already has some administrative authority to essentially carry out the day-to-day activities of the city, staff could probably do that. Again, we wouldn't be able to get the mayor's or council's signature without bringing it back.
Okay. When we've done this in the past, I can think of a couple, we actually did have the mayor sign off. But I, I mean, we, we can go back, whatever the course is. I would propose that, Angie, to yourself. And if there's anybody that doesn't want to go with that, if anybody up here says no, we'll just wait and bring it back. I'm open to that, too. But I'd like to push the administrative rights that we have, since we have given direction on this item before, when it's actually still relevant. So if, does anybody have any issue with that? If you do, courtesy-wise, I'll say we won't do that, but.
Yeah, I'd like to wait. We, we're going to meet two weeks, right? We're adopting the third, the third Monday, so we'll meet two weeks. So I think there's probably time to do that unless, is there an urgency that you see?
No, the, the bill just hit the floor, so it's got a long time to debate. So if you're okay, I, we can bring it back and we'll bring it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Would it have, you know, I think we've all seen the work that Councilmember Schauer has, has put into this and respect it, and he's looking out for everyone. And I would like to be as supportive as possible. And so I'm thinking that it would have more weight if it's signed by everyone.
Yeah, I do, too. I, I do, too. And, you know, the, the CPUC actually heard the item already. So now they're kind of what Sandy used to call belt and suspenders. They're not only doing, they're, they're now trying to push side legislature now by the minority. So we'll see where that goes, but it's more symbolically, I think, important that, hey, it's really something serious. And I would agree with Warren. I, I think benefit to is to get everybody's signature and it shows.
Yes.
It's fully supported.
Yeah.
So I'll go with that.
Having on the next agenda.
Okay. I had an opportunity to attend the Week Here fundraiser over at Asian Wim's Design. And I just want to put out to their president, Colleen Lowe. I think she did an outstanding job this year, as every year, the Week Here fundraising. I remember five years ago being at the Crumbies House in Rossmore. Marilyn, you had a significant role in that with a bunch of people. And that, that was a charity that didn't have a fundraising structure. And now when you go there, you would never know. It's, it was probably three hundred people, very well attended. It was a great thing. So I just say congratulations to the Week Here Board for a great event. One last plug for a board that I am a part of, so Casa U Shelter, Kenny Brandyberry, is Pizza Mondays tonight. So Valentino's every night in April. You can go down there, they buy a pizza. They proceeds one hundred percent. Go to Casa U Shelter. You know, so anybody's interested, a lot of times what we're also doing on the chamber side of this, with Judy's help, is any business that they're having luncheons on Friday or Mondays, we try to get everybody kind of motivated to go out and do that. And it, last year he raised, I want to say he raised about ten thousand dollars for Casa. So again, I'm just going to put a selfless plug out there. So Pizza Mondays, every Monday of April.
Mayor, can I add one thing since you're doing that? I know that all of the programs over at the high school have been severely impacted due to the, the recent ruling regarding demanding fees because it's a class and it's a free education. So being involved with the track team right now, I would just like to put out to the community, any alumni that are part of the track or the cross-country teams, they are significantly suffering from the lack of funds because, you know, either people don't have the money to pay or now that they cannot be compelled to pay, they're really hurting. And they've actually had to cancel meets, which is, for Los Almeidas High School, I think that's a tragedy because they have such a good, a good group of kids over there and I hate to see them not have the opportunity to see the other. and I hate to see them not have the opportunities that the other schools have. So if you are feeling charitable, or, you know, an alumni of any of those sports, I would just say, reach out to the high school, ask for Coach Howard, and let him know that you could be supportive some way. I just think it's a great group of kids, they're encouraging to each other, even when the kids are running in last place, they're still cheering them on, and I have not seen that in my involvement over at the high school, so I just think that I don't want to see this group of kids suffer because of lack of funding. So if you have any that you'd like to share, the track team could definitely use any kind of donations to their 501(c)(3). Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, city manager, do you have any other comments?
I have a few quick things. The general plan meeting with the three commissions, the Parks, Rec, and Cultural Arts, the Planning Commission, the Traffic Commission, is this Wednesday night, here at 7:00 PM, and that is, the purpose of this meeting is to communicate with them as a whole about what the community is saying, about what they want in the next, and what the community should look like in the next 20 years or so. So this is something that Stephen has carefully put together, I'm very excited about it, the public is welcome to attend, all comments are welcome, and we're at the midway point in the general plan process, and as a result of, or an outcome of this meeting on Wednesday, then you will be updated, so, and you're welcome to attend as well. A couple of recreation things coming up, we have the Spring Carnival this Saturday at a new location, because Laurel Park is still being renovated, so if you're interested in Easter egg hunt and all the festivities, April 7th, Saturday, from 9:00 to 11:00, at Little Cottonwood Park, get there early so you can get a parking spot. And the banners, as you recall, were all around town, are sponsored by the council, so thank you. Spring Day Camp is next weekend, next week, during spring break from 9:00 to 4:00, everyone knows where Day Camp is hosted. There are street projects that are going out to bid, or the bids are going to be due this Friday, and there's several street projects, five to be exact, so that's very exciting, that a lot of work is going to be done in the community, and look forward to that. And then the last thing is, we're working on our process of reaching out to the community with regard to giving back over $300,000. This will be part of the budget process, and the community will obviously hear about it in a lot of different ways, but we will, it will probably reach the community in the summer. Today is April 2nd, you know, budget process is right around the corner, and then we're going to, the big deal is that we'll be part of the Community Services Guide, not this upcoming deadline, which is in a few days, but the one after that. So just to let the council know that we're, we're working on that and giving it good effort going forward.
Angie, do you have a status on the RMC application moving through the CPUC for Coyote Creek Park? Because I did, I forgot to report, I went to that board meeting, too, and it's a money grab in there right now. Long Beach came, they had some other projects that they wanted money on, and I just want to make sure that we're kind of keeping track of that.
We have not received our tracking number from SCE, and I emailed our contact at SCE probably Wednesday of last week, and asked for it, and I have not heard yet.
Could I have you guys send me a status report at the end of the week on this, just so I can have an idea?
Put it in the weekly.
Yeah, that'd be great, because I'll reach out to them, too. Okay. If I don't have anything else, we're going to go into closed session, and then we'll come back after that, so we're going to go ahead and adjourn to closed session.